Good afternoon. My name is Brianna Bobo and I am the Chair for the City of St. Louis Charter Commission. I am pleased at this time to call a special meeting of the Charter Commission organized for and on behalf of the people of St. Louis. The time is now four thirty-five P. M. We welcome members of the public who also have joined us virtually. And now our next agenda item includes the roll call, so I will yield the floor to Secretary Intagliata to call the role for commissioners.
Thank you, Chair. When I call your name, please say here or present. Chair Bobo?
Here.
Vice Chair Sheridan?
Here.
Parliamentarian Garth?
Here.
Commissioner Crossland?
Here.
Commissioner Dwight?
Present.
Commissioner Grant?
Present.
The Commissioner Nolan Echols?
Present.
Commissioner Riley?
Present.
And Secretary Intagliata is present. That is nine out of nine present, Madam Chair. See you at Quorum.
Thank you very much. And Secretary Intagliata, will you please also call the role of our ex officio non-voting members at this time?
Certainly. The Honorable Joseph Volmer? Director Casey Milberg?
Present.
The Director Sonia Jenkins Gray?
Present.
The Commissioner Ingrascia? The and Consular Hamilton?
Present.
Very good. Believe that is all.
Special Assistant to the Controller.
Oh, sorry. I'm sorry. My apologies.
It's all right. I'm present.
All right.
Thank you. All right, so we will move right along to our next agenda item, which is to vote out on the pardon?
Point of order. I move we suspend the rules and allow public comment to be the third agenda item.
Second.
Okay. Secretary Intagliata?
So there is a motion to suspend the rules and make public comment the third agenda item. It's been seconded by Commissioner Riley, I believe. And so let me call the roll. Please say aye, aye, or nay when I call your name. Chair Bobo?
Aye.
Vice Chair Sheridan?
Aye.
Parliamentarian Garth?
Aye.
Commissioner Crossland?
Aye.
Commissioner Dwight?
Aye.
Commissioner Grant?
Aye.
Commissioner Nolan Echols?
Aye.
Commissioner Riley?
Aye.
And Secretary Intagliata, aye. Okay, the ayes have it, Madam Chair.
Excellent. So I see that we at least have one, maybe two people who have raised their hand in the public. Is there a way for us to move those people to?
We can allow them to speak.
Okay, excellent. Thank you. So in order, I'm seeing Alderwoman Keyes?
Hello?
Hello.
Okay, thank you so much. This is a little bit different from what we are used to doing in Zoom meetings. So I raised my hand because once again, I do want to raise the issue that at the last meeting that we had, I made the comment as well as others is that this is, this meeting is really not fair, particularly to North St. Louis residents who we identified already as having some challenges to a Zoom meeting based on lack of technology, lack of internet access, as well as the time of day that this meeting is occurring. People do have jobs and are not able to break away to come to a meeting such as this. Additionally, I don't see the real value in why this thing is being rushed. I'm so tired of hearing the phrase for transparency's sake when nothing about this whole proceeding has been transparent. I think that there needs to be a year for this thing to be combed through and to include all stakeholders in the conversation.
Thank you. Next, I see Dennis Roche.
Yes, I don't know. I just joined and my hand was raised. I didn't mean to raise.
Oh, okay. If you could lower your hand, then?
I did.
Okay. And also can we lower, is there a way to manually lower Alderwoman Keyes' hand as well? Now that she's open? Yes, thank you. Can we hear from C. J. Johnson?
Hi, I can lower my hand. My software, um, hi, I want to thank you all again for this platform. I hope that you are, if you're coming together, rest in this as the community and we had so much input on last session. I hope you all are coming together to vote no to not pass this forward. This is a mess and it does not support the needs of the underserved black and brown communities, and it also takes our voice away. As we all know, this is a democracy, so I'm urging you all to to vote no. If you care about our communities, do not take send this any further. Take care. Thanks.
Thank you. I have Yolanda's iPhone.
Yes, can you hear me?
Yes, I can.
Okay, this is Yolanda Brown. I'm the committee woman here in the 12th ward. I have, I have one question and then I also have a statement that I'd like to make. I understand that there was a poll taken that said that the public agreed to the decisions that the commission, that that the commission plans to put forward before the board. Am I correct about that?
No, there was not one.
There was not a poll. Okay, so then someone on the commission is sharing false information. So, okay, so my next thing is I'm going to ask that the commission request that they, that it be extended for another year to allow the public to truly be engaged and allow you guys to follow the rules as printed in the commission guidelines, which does call for you to engage the public. Because I think that if you put this before the public and you have not followed the written guidelines, that definitely is a cause for the commission's suggestions to be challenged. So I would like for you guys to take that in consideration because we definitely feel that we have not been given the opportunity that we should have been given. I mean, I just happen to not work during the summer, which allows me to participate in this meeting today. But if it was a normal workday for me, I could not be in this meeting. And someone actually mentioned at the last meeting that we had that the times were inconvenient, and if you guys could possibly change it. And it appears as though either you didn't hear them or that request just was not something that you guys felt was important enough to consider. But I think that it is very important that you consider allowing the people that are going to be affected by the decisions that you guys are making to have an opportunity to share their voice. So, and by doing that, you can extend this for you. I'm asking that you extend, give yourself an extend or ask for an extension for another year, please.
Okay, thank you for your comment. David Rodriguez?
Yes, thank you for the time. I'm speaking on behalf of St. Louis Firefighters Local Seventy-three and myself as a city resident. I just want to urge members of the commission to consider at least the elements of this that that affect the civil service process and the adverse impacts that it will have to the civil service process, especially as pertains to public safety. So those are, those are just some of the things that I want to talk about, or I wanted to urge the commission to reconsider. Thank you.
Thank you. I have B. Williams.
Yes, can you hear me?
Yes.
Yes, my name is Bethany Williams and I am the Director Streets for the City of St. Louis. And I first want to say thank you for this opportunity to come before the commission for a few minutes to talk about the transportation piece that you all are looking to, the Department of Transportation piece that you're looking to move forward. Just a couple of points that I wanted to point out that I've been in communication and just make sure that you are aware of. First of all, the mobility plan that the city has moved funds for for our offer dollars will give us a more holistic look at moving mobility of all people and all residents and anyone that travels in and out through the city of St. Louis. Allowing us the time and the space to deliver that mobility plan, then we can put a place, a plan, and action that we can move forward with a budget as well as how do we improve our transportation needs to all motorists across the city of St. Louis. Currently, what we have in the transportation department, it does not outline all of the functions of the current streets department, which raises major question for me. In the street department, we have the toll lot, we have refuse, which is our trash service. We have recycling. We have the director's office that covers all types of permits, your party, your block permits, your event permits that you have. We also have our streets mobility and traffic as well as our street maintenance. I think that the transportation plan is looking at certain aspects of it, but then where would the other aspects and components fall? My third thing that I want to talk about is hiring of engineers. Currently, we have engineers on our T.O. that it is impossible for us to get engineers into those seats to do that work. The engineers that we currently have on staff, they are working above and beyond. And by us developing a transportation plan and not looking at the holistic picture of how we're looking at this from a budget perspective, as well as an engineering and transportation perspective, nothing will change that component of our level of service for the city. And so that's what I want to make sure. When we talk about being holistic and wanting to serve the entire community and the entire city of St. Louis, I want to make sure that we know a transportation plan is what we need as a city. And since we have been here, our relationship, since I've been here, our relationship with B.P.S., our relationship with planning has grown. And that is where the city's engineering, engineers are housed in our B.P.S. department. We have a good working relationship. We work together. When we look at timing, engineering takes time. So putting a transportation department in place will not speed up the process. It will only hinder us when we don't have the people or the budget to carry out that wish for the city of St. Louis. So I do strongly encourage and I ask that the commission will look at these things and hear the pieces that I'm saying. And if it's any more information that I can give you all as the director of the department that over the last two and a half years, I've taken a deep dive into how we do business and how we service and how we're equitable to the city of St. Louis, allowing us that time and space as an, as a department is something that I think you will see the value in. And you will see less of the, the things that you don't value or you're wanting to change. You will see a change in that when we have a plan that will lead us and govern us. And that's what the transportation mobility plan will do. So I am asking that the commission will consider not moving forward with the transportation bill and allow us the time to get our study in so that we can plan and prepare and budget and move the city forward as it pertains to the mobility of all people. I say thank you again for this time and this opportunity, and I'll turn my time back over.
Thank you, Director Williams. I'm going to have you just stay on just for a second because I see two commissioners hand raised. Do you, do you mind hanging out for a second and answering some questions?
Yes, I have a few minutes. Yes.
Okay, Commissioner Grant, did you want to?
Yeah, I just want to make sure I understand these comments. So, so when like Ms. Williams says the proposal doesn't address refuse, I don't believe that's true. The proposal mirrors the existing language by saying the Department of Transportation shall have charge of the collection and disposal of garbage, recycling, and refuse. So I just want to make sure, am I missing something there?
No, no. Oh, sorry. I apologize.
And then?
No.
Okay, go. So why don't you do that, that question first, so?
Okay, so it's not that you're missing. Yes, the refuse department was added in, I do believe, on the first draft. I didn't see it. The second draft, refuse department was adding in. I was speaking to the different components. So we have five major divisions that are housed in the current street department. And so when I was listing, refuse is one of the major divisions that we have, but we have other divisions as well. And the transportation department that is laid out currently now does not speak to any of those other functions that we provide as a, as a streets department.
But, but the current, Ms. Williams, but the current charter in section thirteen doesn't speak to those divisions either. So I'm just wondering if that's an, I don't, I mean, explain to me, if the current charter doesn't list those divisions, how is it a problem if the new section doesn't list those provisions?
So the, the current charter speaks to the streets department, and when you read through, you see where it talks about permitting, and it talks about the sewer lateral, it talks about fifty-fifty. So in the new
No, that's not in the charter, Ms. Williams. I mean
No, so it's, it's a, it's a general title that's the streets department, the Department of Street. And when you look at the functions of the streets department, these are all things that are listed under the streets department. So in the charter, it just says the streets department, and yes, it does talk about refuse specifically, but anything else it does not. And so that's why I'm saying when you speak to these functions and you're, you're singling out with the new transportation piece, you're singling, and if we're going to single out, it needs to single out everything that we do, if not just the things that are important to the Department of Transportation that you're looking at. So who's going to cover those additional functions when we turn to a transportation department? If that's the wishes of the commission and the citizens of the city of St. Louis? So that's the piece that I was pointing out.
Okay, I can just tell you, Ms. Williams, that the language in the new, in the proposed Department of Transportation includes the same language as in existing section thirteen of the Charter for the Board of Public Service about the Department of Public Streets. So I don't think there's any intent to take any current functions away. It's to add add these existing responsibilities, including like, for instance, planning and engineering. So I just not, I, I just would, I, you know,
So
So
Okay, so the streets department's main function is to maintain what has already been built by B.P.S. That, that is the sole purpose of the streets department is to maintain. And if you just change the name of the department without having the people and the budget to function that department, then it will still do the same thing that it's doing now, maintain the city of St. Louis, what is built by B.P.S.
Okay, I just want to ensure there, the language says for the proposed amendments, among other things, says the new Department of Transportation shall have charge over the planning, design, construction, maintenance, and all operation of programs and public improvements related to enhancing and improving the safety of all users of the right of ways, including pedestrians, bicyclists, and motor vehicle operators. So I just, I was make sure that, that that language about maintaining roads is still in there. So I just, you know.
Exactly, but it's the additional functions that we do not have the personnel or the budget to cover. And so if, if without looking at this from a holistic approach, where are we going to get these people from? Where are we going to get the budget from to bring in these additional people to do this work? That will only hinder. But currently, what we currently have, B.P.S. does the engineering work. They do the contracting work. They do the building work. Anything that is, that we maintain, say, for example, Alderman wants to do some, some enhanced safety in their neighborhood. We're not able to engineer that. We send it to B.P.S. They work through their board liaison where their funding comes from. And then we move forward with hiring a contractor, hiring someone that can do that work. Most of that work we cannot even do in-house. So that's the piece that, the, the layer of a transportation department and putting all of those functions there when we currently have departments that do that work is if we, that's where the problem is. I, I hear what you're saying about adding people to it, but we're currently in a place as a city where we're having an issue hiring engineers.
Okay, thank you. And I also see Jasmine, you have your hand raised?
Good afternoon, Director Williams. I have a few questions, but primarily a few points of concern. You speak to a plan that is supposed to come from your department. Do you have a timeline for said plan? And has this plan been presented to the community by way of a public hearing or any such process?
So that plan runs through B.P.S. That is something that's a, they hire a contractor. All we did was requested the offer dollars as a city. Like, we just put forth the idea for this is something that the city needs. When, when I came into this seat and I realized there were things that we did not have as far as a transportation plan, you know, guidelines to how we move when we're working with Alders to identify different approaches of, of safety features that they're wanting to enhance in their neighborhood and in their communities, that's when the conversation was started, like, well, do we have a mobility plan? Do we have something on a larger scale that's not only impacting one block or two blocks, but something that looks at the city as a whole? And that is when the request was, was presented to look at a citywide mobility plan. And that is currently what B.P.S. is managing now.
Okay, so B.P.S. has not provided the city with a deadline, timeline of any sort?
I, I believe it's by the end of the year, but please don't pull me on that. That would be a Rich Bradley question.
Okay. My next point of concern is I, I completely agree with a holistic approach and understanding how the civil service and/or the personnel department and the finance departments are a part of said change structurally in order to implement a Department of Transportation, but could you see, could you forecast your state? And why the public is requesting that such a department be present in our structure?
I feel that the, the community, and this is just from me going to community meetings and me engaging with, with constituents and me having meetings. Can you hear me now? I'm in this convention center, so I'm trying to move around. So, okay. So, so in my communications with residents and constituents and doing community meetings and attending meetings and things of this nature, ward meetings, it's just the timing. It's like we have a request and it's not being fulfilled. So when I go back and I've researched those things, if you don't have a plan in place to provide that level of service, then that is where we were seeing the problem. So what we're currently doing is making the, we're trying to turn the streets department from being so reactive. Right now, we are emergency situation department. You call, we come, we fix. That's it. Fix back to what was there. But when we try to look at how do we be proactive, how do we do asset management? These are the steps that the streets department is currently taking. These are the things that we're budgeting now in our plan so that we could figure out how do we budget, how do we come to Alders and say, Alderwoman or Alderman, this is how much needs to be invested in your roads and your community over the next five years or over the next two years. This is our priority list based off of the rating of your pavement. This is how we are able to change what we're currently seeing. So if you look at the budget structure of the streets department, we do not budget for paving. We budget for pothole patching. We budget for snow removal. We budget for striping, refreshing pavement, striping. We budget for, you know, changing signal cabinets and lights and things of that nature. But anything past that, these are conversations that we have with the Alder. And we're, we're moving ourselves to a direction that we can speak more theoretical to the Alders when they're making the decisions with these budgets. We don't currently have that budget, and the city is not structured for a transportation department where we can move and see that type of function or see that type of budget at this time.
Okay, thank you very much for your comment. Okay, I see Amanda Jefferson. I recognize you at this time.
I think Ms. Jefferson's muted.
Amanda, if you're there, you'll, you'll need to unmute. Okay, we might need to come back to
There are, there are a number of questions in the question area. There's Coffee Wright would like, has raised the hand. And Ray Cummings is not able to raise his hand, but would like to be called on to ask a question.
I actually see Ray Cummings hand raised on my side.
All right, very good.
Okay, I will make sure to, to ask for them. Amanda? No, we, okay, so it looks like Reverend Gray is the next speaker, and then I'll go to Coffee Wright and Ray Cummings.
Oh, I'm, okay, now, now I'm unmuted. Started out by saying, first of all, good afternoon. I'm in Indianapolis, and so I do apologize for the background and everything. I want to say that I applaud the the work of the commission. I think by and large, the work of the commission has been admirable and well-intended. Madam Chair, just based on the last presenter alone regarding the, the recommendation for Department of Transportation, it's obvious that more conversation and consultation and communication is absolutely necessary. It's not to say that the commission has failed in its efforts. It's just that I think that you were given a Herculean task with not enough time to do it. And I would strongly recommend on behalf of the St. Louis Metropolitan Clergy Coalition and the Baptist Ministers Association of St. Louis and Facinity, on behalf of those organizations, we appeal to the commission to take a step back, utilizing the work that you've done, utilizing the networking that you have been involved in, recognizing now that there are more people who are ready and willing and able to engage with you and not rush into this. We're, we're, we're appealing to your, your sense of community, your sense of better judgment. Recommend to the Board of Aldermen another year, just one year, one year to be able to give the best product that you can give, not, not half of what you want, but the best product that you can give all of you on here. I, I believe in my heart that you are committed to this city and that you don't want to and that you don't wanna give this city half of anything. I know it's frustrating. I can see the look on your faces. I know it's frustrating. But please, for the, for the, for the, for the sake of this city, in good spirit, um in good faith, please give some thought. And I'm hoping, uh and I heard the last meeting, I I believe that the commission did hear the community, I believe you did, you withdrew uh the public advocacy recommendation, you withdrew it out of the recommendations, you withdrew the appointments out of the, from the mayor, out of the recommendations. I believe that that's because you heard. But you heard because you were there. You you showed up to the community and the community showed up for you to let you know how it felt. There are others in the community that want an opportunity to be involved, to engage in changing a charter that is gonna, that could change the lives of so many people. Please don't rush into this. It's not necessary. This charter has existed for a long time. There are obviously some things that need to be changed. Uh, but please don't rush it for the sake of, a- a- and I'm not. I said I wasn't gonna be negative, I'm not gonna be negative. I'm appealing to your better, your your best in, your better nature. Uh, I believe uh that you wanna do the right thing, ask for the extension. Don't forward the recommendations right now. Take more time, be more engaged. Uh, don't bring on any new recommendations. Uh, and I believe that that is in the best interest of the, of this city, and many people will support you in that endeavor. Again, thank you very much for all the time that you give. Uh, I know it's a sacrifice. I know that you want, you wanna do a good job. So thank you all very much, Madam Chair. Thank you for allowing me the opportunity to speak tonight.
Excellent. Coffee Wright is next? You'll have to come off mute. Okay, um, is Ray Cummings available?
Can you hear me?
Yes, we can.
Uh, thank you for the chance to speak with you this afternoon. Uh, I too would like to congratulate you for all of the hard work that you have completed based on the tasks that you're given. But like grandmother used to say, sometimes we shouldn't put the cart in front of the horse. I know some people on this call might not understand what that means. It means that there's a certain sequence that things should go in. You put the, the horse goes in front of the cart and not the cart in front of the horse. And what I'm saying is, our city is um population is decreasing rapidly. It's primarily decreasing because of black families exodus out of the city. And I don't think for one minute that they're leaving because of any failure to what the charter has done. And I'm saying that to say, uh, this, this city needs a short-range and long-range plan from thirty thousand feet for where we want to go and how we wanna correct these things. And then we can come back and see whether we have some structure in City Hall, basically the charter, the structure of the government, and how that affects what's going on. Uh, right now, when I talk to families who have left and ones who are contemplating leaving, it's not anything associated with the charter that is causing that exodus. And I'm not being critical of you guys. You guys were brought here to do a job, you were given a job to do. And I think, given the circumstances, you've done the best job that you could possibly do. I'm just saying, right now, the problems that we have are not in the structure of the charter. It is that we don't have an overall unified plan for St. Louis moving forward, either in the short term or the long term. So I guess I'm in agreement uh with a couple of the other speakers that we need to uh take the work you've done. We need to kind of uh table it for right now. And that we need to uh insist that uh our, our city leaders, including the mayor and the Board of Aldermen, come up with a unified plan for our city that will begin to address this mass exodus of black families. Because we know one thing for sure, uh, a city can survive in the future if they continue to have population declines like we're having. So I'm just urging you to uh to table this until our Alders and the mayor get together and from thirty thousand feet, talk about what they expect to happen in this city five, ten, and twenty years from now. That we don't have. And if we do have it, I haven't seen it. Thank you very much.
Thank you.
Uh, Madam Chair, can we try again with Coffee Wright? I think.
Yes.
Okay.
Coffee Wright?
Um, and we do not have the ability to unmute you. You have to press unmute yourself.
Coffee Wright, are you there? Okay, I still see the the mute on my side. If you're unable to, uh, if you're un- if you're able to mute, uh unmute yourself, sorry, please do so. Okay, um, we might have to try again. Charles Bryson?
Uh, commissioners, uh, thank you for taking public comment. I will try to be brief. I said to you all a long time ago that one of the hardest things were to do what you may be doing today. And that is changing the charter, when most agencies and departments and city government feel that things are either going right or will go right in in their future. Well, I've been in city government for almost twenty years, outside of government for two and a half years. And I can tell you, things related to transportation in this city have not gotten any better. In fact, they've gotten worse. And so I wanna uh, wanna talk a little bit about what uh uh Director Williams said earlier. Number one, uh, the most important thing to think about is a, the overall Department of Transportation handles most of the issues that are related to streets and sidewalks throughout the city. And that's important because what you heard her say is, well, the streets department does these things and BPS does those things that are directly related to streets. Instead of having one s- Department of Transportation to where everybody knows and understands that all street and um sidewalk-related issues go to. And that's very confusing for city residents who may not know that, well, we can call the streets department. But literally, who's gonna be handling this? It's the Department of uh Public Safety. I'm sorry, uh, BPS. So that's very confusing in itself. And when you talk about uh staffing and funding, the most important thing to consider is, you all agreed that this would not start until Jan- July first, twenty twenty-seven. That allows plenty of time for, number one, uh, the, the Department of of um, I'll say the Department of Personnel, to come up with a grid that says these are the positions as of July first, that'll be needed. It'll also give time for the mayor, for the Board of Aldermen and other city officials to come together to determine the best way to fund a Department of Transportation. So I think those things are going to be key. And anything that was not in the or, I'm sorry, not, things that are not in the charter change can be done by the Board of Aldermen. And so it is not, everything that it, that was, that might have been excluded for whatever reason, the, the Board of Aldermen have a chance to come in and fix before this, before uh July first, twenty twenty-seven. So as far as I'm concerned, I'd love to see a vote today to give it to the Board of Aldermen on the Department of Transportation issue. Uh, thank you.
Thank you. Um, moving now to Amber Cole.
Good evening.
Good evening.
I believe I sent, I'm hoping that you, that uh everyone received a uh my testa- written testimony, because I sent it in last, I think Saturday. And I sent it to your email uh regarding some of my statements. But I'm hoping that, that you guys would really table this. And I know that you, you guys did some hard work. And like my uh comments said in my uh written testimony, that uh we, it took the charter, for them to put a charter together originally, it probably wasn't a year, it probably wasn't two years. It was haggling back and forth and going through a whole lot of issues. And so our uh community, our city has grown considerably. Uh, we've got different cultures. It's not the same cultures that's around. Um, we don't have, we have technology where we had horse and buggy. Now, if you wanna take the horse and buggy little stuff off, then that's fine, you know, but right now, I think it'd be a good thing to kind of table it until, you know, instead of wasting, not, it's not wasting time, but sending it to the Board of Aldermen. They going ba- haggling back and forth about it. And then coming back to you, that's a bunch of unnecessary um time in which you could still be using to get some of these other things out, you know? So I know my community was very strong in saying, no, 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 no. And I agree. And because of the, the system, you know, the systemic uh racism and the things that have happened in our community that continue to happen over and over, uh, I'mma ask you, is to just wait. What, I I mean, what would happen if you would wait? Ask yourself, what would happen if you waited? What would happen if we don't wait? And what kind of product am we, are we gonna turn out if we don't wait or wait? Thank you.
Thank you. And we'll move to um Representative Aldridge. But I uh do wanna quickly say, as we're giving the mic to um Rep. Aldridge, that um, Amber Cole, we don't actually have the written testimony that you mentioned. So if you could resend it, if uh if possible, that would be great. So we could circulate it out to um all that are on the call from the commission side. That'd be, that'd be great. Um, Mr. Aldridge, the floor is yours.
Thank you, Chairwoman Boba. I need to change that name from Rep. to Alderman, but one day I'll.
I was gonna let it go, but.
Yeah, yeah, you are fine. First and foremost, uh, I wanna thank each and every commissioner uh for all the hard work that y'all put in, being a former commissioner on the Ferguson Commission. Um, like many have said on this uh call, either for or against, changing a charter is no easy task. We're talking about a charter that was set forth long before any of our time that was probably put on by, that was written by a whole bunch of white men, literally in the charter, while it only says Alderman. And I know one of the proposals that you guys have, when we, when we talk about, and I, and I, a lot of people that have spoke have the utmost respect for, that are asking for uh this charter to slow down and wait. Um, but I would say, you know, that I feel is kind of the, the issue we have in St. Louis, why we have such slow population, or the reason why people decide to move uh over the last several years, either to St. Louis County or to St. Charles. Um, I know you guys have been meeting for a year. I think, I wasn't gonna say anything, but I think it's important to put some information out there that's important. You guys have been meeting for a year. I know there's some people that have spoke that have been present during some of these commission meetings from the, from the very start. Uh, and this isn't the end. Um, per ordinance, I don't think you guys can even extend. I know there's been comments that say, please extend, ask the mayor, ask the board. We cannot extend the commission because the city of St. Louis not saying people on the call, or not every ward, because it wasn't a hundred percent. But we voted uh under previous Alderman Annie Rice, she sent it to the ballot, the city voted for. And in that ordinance, if you read it, it is just like how St. Louis County do. They look at their charter every ten years. So we cannot extend, yeah, ability to um say, go to the mayor, go to the Alderman, and do another six months. Uh, as much as probably some of us Alder people also would like that, is is just not what is in uh the charter that we recently voted on. Um, and I do wanna highlight that this isn't the end-all-be-all. After, if you all vote to take some of the recommendations or to not take any of them, they will go to the Board of Aldermen. The Board of Aldermen will be having a hearing, I believe, on the twenty-third, coming up in legislative, legislation and rules, which is another opportunity for the community to have input on some of these pieces of legislation by looking thoroughly through them. I know President Green is really big on ensuring that community voices is uplifted. I do wanna, again, give a shout out to the commission. I think, um, you know, there definitely could have been more uh outreach and engagement. Uh, I do know y'all wasn't granted funding, maybe like the Ferguson Commission had to be able to travel to different venues. But where there's a will, there's a way, and it could have been done better. And I think that is a, a big part of why people are frustrated, because they feel like their voices haven't been heard during uh the process and could have had uh more input. But I want to ensure the community, community that this isn't the end-all-be-all on what the Charter Commission does. Um, if they vote on these recommendations, it then goes to the Board of Aldermen. Uh, and it goes to a committee where those committees can have input from residents, either virtual or via testimony, like Ms. Amber Cole, you can be able to submit it uh via testimony. And I'm sure we'll probably try to push to have more than one just public meeting, and then there'll be an opportunity for you to call your Alderman to say no. And even if the Board of Aldermen still moves it forward, that's not the end-all-be-all. There is still another opportunity, if it goes to the ballot this November fifth, for voters to say, we appreciate all the hard work that this commission has done, but we just don't agree with maybe one or two. However, again, this charter is very outdated. And being in city government, just my one year and a few months, I've seen how St. Louis city is antiquated, and the charter is our constitution. When you look at just changing the pronouns, which I think is one of the recommendations that the charter is bringing forward, you have, you, we're called Aldermen. We have women at this board that, we, we say Alderwoman, but per charter, they're not even a woman in our charter. And I know that's one of the cleanups, is to make sure that women are also getting the title that they're due to be called Alderperson. Or maybe somebody from our LGBTQIA community who identifies as a man or woman, Alderperson. There's another one that gives the Board of Aldermen the budget authority to increase. When we talk about being able to advocate, living in the fourteenth ward from North Side, we really don't have the power to, when it comes to the budget, advocate for our ward like they do in St. Louis County, or they do on the state level, or they just do in other municipalities like Brentwood and Ferguson, where your Alderperson has the ability to actually increase. So um, again, I wasn't gonna say anything, but I do think it's important. Uh, and I understand people's concerns, and I, I write ten toes down. But I also think it's important to know what happens after this process. And that the ability to just say, extend per the constitution of what was passed, the ordinance that was put forward in the uh previous Alderwoman, this commission cannot just uh pick up and extend for the next six months, because that is not what, that's not what's in the language. But I can assure you, I know Board of Aldermen members and the president have been taking these recommendations very seriously. They wanna hear from the public if these recommendations were to move forward, where they go to the Board of Aldermen next. And again, I wanna thank you all for y'all's time. I know y'all are volunteers uh that have put in. And again, I want to thank you all for your time. I know y'all volunteers uh that have put in time in this as well as all the non-voting members. Um, Councilwoman Hamilton, uh Casey from the mayor's office, everybody, and Gracia. Uh, so Personnel Personnel Director Jenkins Gray have been putting in time over the last year to try to figure out how do we even look at the charter to just make a few changes and how we can continue to do it moving forward. So I want to thank you all for the work that you are doing and and have done to get uh at least a conversation, which hasn't happened in a very long time in the city, on the charter happening in a way that hopefully we start to move forward on it.
Thank you very much. And I I do want to um highlight that point that uh has been brought up a couple of times now. Um, just to reinforce the idea that this uh entire commission body was created through vote, through ordinance. And so um, we can't simply just say we we need, we want extra time or we need to go to the Board of Aldermen. It 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 doesn't necessarily work that way. So I do appreciate you underscoring that. And I also see a hand raised from the commission, Commissioner Nolan Echols.
Thank you. City Council Hamilton, can you speak to the commission's ability to change the language in the initiative article that can extend the time for this commission in the event that we propose such?
So if this um commission, I'm I'm, I normally would not do that. But I will just say that when this commission issues its recommendations and they go um, if they go, if the Board of Aldermen sends them to the ballot, by that time, this commission will have ceased to exist by operation of law. And so this particular commission um will not exist at the time that the recommendations are voted upon under the law.
Thank you. Okay, let's move on to um Wendellin Cogshell for comment.
Hello?
Yes, we can hear you now. Thank you.
Yes, I'm just, um, I was gonna ask Ms. Williams something about the Streets Department, but I'm not until I read up on it. I didn't know anything about, you know, the meetings you all had. I just started going to the meetings last week. And so I just feel like, I think it should be something passed because every time we go to these meetings and they say we want public opinion and only like, like maybe thirty or forty people come out of three hundred and thirty thousand people that we have in the city of St. Louis. I just don't think that's a fair assessment of what the people want. So I'm almost wanting to put something in the legislation that say if you don't get a certain amount of input from the community, then you can't move forward. Every time we come to these things, we go down to the Board of Alderman Budget Committee and we voice our opinion. And I don't care how uh people the presentation is at the Water Division or the Utilities or the even by state, they just got approved from the Budget Committee to to pass something on to the Board of Aldermen. They said that they did outreach and it was not one person, I didn't see but one person that showed up on their side. Everybody was opposing what they were uh 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 proposing to pass. So I think this is a sham when you say you want public opinion. I think people already got their minds made up. I would feel better if more it was more attendance in the public, it was more outreach, and maybe it needs to be a budget. Every time, it's always the excuse, oh, we didn't have the money. But you have money when you're running for office. We have signs, we have uh stuff coming out, you know, to the mail. I I just think that it should be more outreach in everything you all do because it'd be more transparency. And that's what I wanted to say, but you know, I, you know, we can't, like you said, maybe the charter does need changing. But I would just like to see a little more transparency. Thank you.
Thank you for your comment. And I see um, it looks like Coffee Right is back, so.
Hello, can you hear me?
Yes, we can hear you now. Thank you.
Awesome. Thank you. I appreciate your patience. Um, okay, so anyway, I'm on a different computer now. Um, I I just have to say, as an advocate as well as an activist, and I don't know if you can see me right now, but I'm in a room with two hundred, how many is it? Two hundred seventy-three people. I'm not going to pass the mic because we are saying the same thing. And that is, please, please, be let's be fair about this. Let's be real. Now, we are not getting the word out. People do not know what's really going on down there. People are not aware of what you all are doing. And it's and I can't blame you totally for it, but you are not getting the information out so people will know to come out and what you're voting on, what's on the table. People don't have a clue because people, we don't have, a lot of people in our community don't have the internet. A lot of people in our community don't have computers. We know there's a library, but people go to work. And by the time they get home, it's six o'clock. And so all the meetings that I've been to, the town halls meetings, the 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 different activist meetings, even on different subjects, and then somebody come in and bring this piece of paper saying, oh, it's going to be a meeting down at City Hall. They're trying to do this with the charter, do that with the charter. We understand, you know, we have to change with time and things needs improvement. But we do not feel it's fair at all, no shape, form or fashion. But you are to make these decisions without the public having input. You have to give more of us the opportunity. And, you know, and and we're just asking that, you know, be fair about things because people gonna keep leaving the city. If y'all want people to stay in the city, then then you can't, don't, don't, don't go along with the rest of the crap that we've been dealing with. We can, we like, we elected y'all in here because we wanted you to be our voice. That's what you're supposed to be, our voice. But you're not being our voice if you're not speaking the language that we are telling you. You're you're speaking a foreign language to a lot of us, and that's not what we elected you all for. You may be holding those seats today, but just think, you're gonna have to be reelected. And also, there's a process called recall. And I'm not making any threats, but I'm just telling you what the what's what the voice is on the streets. Because that's where I am every day with the people, on the streets, with the people, the people that vote, the people that's living off of the decisions that you all are making. Because guess what? Our whole household ain't making ain't ain't the celery that one of y'all get a year. And we got some, some of us have five and six people in our household. So the decisions that you all are making are affecting our lives. Not just today, but for the whole generation and the generations to come. So what's the big rush? That is ridiculous. It don't seem like there's any transparency at all. You can make that word come out of your mouth, but we're not seeing it. We we're not trying to keep shutting down City Hall. And some of y'all on that board, y'all know what it's like to shut down City Hall because y'all was outside with me and I stood by y'all. So y'all in that position now, don't play funny because you know who you are and we know who you are. And do the right thing. That's what we put you there for. Don't start talking this oh high dollar funny language now that you holding them seats. Because you know we need your support. You know how bad it is out here, and you know what the people need. So whatever somebody's whispering in your ear, you better turn them off. Because we're not playing. And I'm copyright. Thank you for listening to me. And that's right, I said it.
Thank you. Um, Commissioner Garth. And then we'll move to Show Me Integrity as the next public comment. Uh, I think you're on.
There we go. There we go. All right, there we go. Fixed. Um, with respect to uh Ms. Coffee Right, I I I know we know each other quite well. Um, I I just wanted to ask, um, now, you you, are you aware that all nine of us are not elected to this commission? We're just appointed by the mayor?
I understand that. And that and 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 because of that, you all are in a better position to do the right thing. Because you're not, you're not even, so so why, why is the big rush? You're not, you're, if you're not elected and you're volunteers, then then why, why mess up our lives? You know, because I mean, y'all don't even have to live in the city. The city workers don't have to live in the city anymore, if if I'm not mistaken. But we're here, we have to live in the city. We're stuck here. We've been here, my grandma was lived here, my grandmama's mama lived here. We got seven generations in the city. Okay, and we pay a lot of city taxes. I graduated from Ashland. I went to Beaumont. I graduated from Forest Park College. I'm a city girl. And even though some of us may go off to college and leave the state, we come back. I just bury my mama here. I bury my grandmama here. I bury my daddy here. My people are here. We're here in full force. As a matter of fact, my great, great, great grandfather was a color trouper right here in Missouri. Okay, right here in Missouri. This is my history. Okay? This is our history, Missouri. Don't make it misery. Make it, leave it Missouri, family. We gotta live here. And when these people are gone, when these people getting paid and they do their thing or whatever's going on, when this stuff leaves the table, we still gotta deal with it. I'm a great grandmother. I got a twenty-two-year-old granddaughter and a two-year-old grandson. I don't want him to have to keep fighting the same battles that I fight. This stuff ain't right, y'all. It ain't right. I don't care who the damn mayor is. I don't care who the Aldermen is. Just do the right thing for the people. I don't even like my Alderman. But guess what? Yesterday I saw her. She didn't speak to me, I ain't speak to her. But I agree with her on this, I tell you that. I stand with her on this. I stand shoulder to shoulder with you, Laura Keys.
Thank you. Show me integrity.
Hi, this is Benjamin Singer. Apologies for the lack of person's name on the Zoom account. I wanted to thank our volunteer uh Charter Commission members who are all city residents from all parts of the city, Northside, Southside and Central, who are nominated and appointed by the Board of Aldermen and the mayor under the Charter Amendment of Prop C. I want to thank you for holding so many meetings on Zoom and in person throughout this process, both on City Hall and on the Northside and the Southside. And I think it's great that so many people saw a social media post on the internet two weeks ago and showed up. I think it would be great if more people showed up throughout the process upon seeing the formation of this, voting on it and seeing it in the media, uh as you all have met consistently and regularly over the last year. So thank you for all your work. I know it's not hard and it's not easy being a volunteer. Agree with pretty much everything that Alderman Aldridge said. Um, and I appreciate you sending forward whatever you feel uh you can and is right based on the public feedback you've heard to the Board of Aldermen so that they can continue this process as is required under the charter that over sixty percent of St. Louisans voted on to move this process forward. Uh, so thank you again.
Thank you very much for that. Um, I see, all I see is Yolanda's iPhone, so if you could state your name.
Yeah, it was, is, can you hear me?
Yes.
Okay, because I was in the middle of typing a question, so let me get, I'm s- I'm sorry, my dog is insisting on talking at the same time I talk. Um, I was just going to ask, it is my understanding, Ms. Hamilton asked someone to speak on the language that allows the commission to be extended. And it seems like it was totally ignored. So I'm just wondering if you all will please address that because ignoring it kind of uh gives is a bad look, actually.
She answered the question.
Who answered the question?
Counselor Hamilton answered the question.
Okay, so, so then I must have uh missed her answer. But did her answer say that there is language that allows that to happen?
Uh, no, there is not language that allows that to happen. The, so essentially, we were created by ordinance that was voted on, so.
I understand, I understand all of that. I do understand all of that. But I thought that someone said that there was language there, so I was trying to get some clarity on that.
Oh, there is not. I, Counselor Hamilton, would you like to um address that? Like, once again, sorry to put you on the spot.
Yeah, sure. Um, so there was an ordinance that that went to the people and has amended the charter that created this commission. And by uh the language that is in the target charter, this commission dissolved by operation of law one year after its first meeting. And so by the time anyone would vote on anything extending this particular commission, um, it would have already dissolved by operation of law.
Okay, okay, I did hear you say that. Perhaps I was writing something down as um you, you know, when you was talking and I didn't get clarity on it. But I do want to uh say a couple of things because of Alderman Aldridge mentioned the um Board of Aldermen having the ability to add to the budget for if an Alder person is in is requesting something specific for their area. And that language allows them to do that in private without the public's information or input is my understanding. But there's some language in there that allows meetings that says they will be closed-door meetings. And perhaps that is the uh language that is associated with the um the position that you all wanted to create or or suggesting to create um in place that was going to be in place of a comptroller position. But there's language that clearly states that that is allowed to happen. And I'm very concerned about that. I said that at the last meeting, and I'm saying it again because I feel that as a taxpayer, I have the right to know how my money is being spent. We all have the right to know and to have closed-door meetings and divvy it out. However, doesn't sound very legal to me to allow the Board of Ald- the Alder persons to uh adjust the budget however they see fit. So that is something I'm asking you to please reconsider also.
Okay.
And thank you.
Thank you. So um quickly to to address that, um, to my knowledge, uh, and I I may be wrong, commissioners, keep me honest. Um, to my knowledge, the language that we're proposing uh does not um necessarily uh encourage, is not intended to encourage a lack of transparency or it's not intended to encourage um, you not knowing where your money is going. Trust me, I, as a city resident, also would like to know where my money is going. Um, but several of those budget meetings are open to the public. I've tuned into them via Zoom, just like you're tuning in right now. Um, they go over budget um concerns and things of that nature. So we're just allowing them the opportunity to increase where right now they only have the opportunity to decrease a budget line item. So that's really what we're after with that. Hopefully that um answers that question. But I also see Commissioner Grant, would you like to add to that?
Yeah, I I I would just, I I think, uh, and I I don't know uh Ms. Yolanda's last name. But um, I I think she may be referring to something the Comptroller Office uh ha- ha- had said in relationship to the proposal involving the Comptroller's Office, which is now not even being considered. Uh, and I just want to make sure that i- in my view, there's this remaining proposal um, which uh A- A- Alder Person Aldridge referred to about increasing, given the Board of Aldermen the authority to increase budget items. If anything, that improves transparency over the current process. So right now, um, we have budgetary decisions being made, uh especially about increasing items only by the Board of E and A. Uh, and the idea of giving the Board of Aldermen this budgeting authority will bring that process out into the light because those items will be debated as part of an overall budgetary ordinance. So my belief is that proposal will, if anything, increase transparency and accountability then so that taxpayers know how their money is being spent. Thanks.
Thank you. And uh, I also see for a public comment, Damian, I don't have a a last name. So if you could state your first and last name.
Damian Johnson. Hello, can you hear me?
Yes, we can. Thank you, Damian Johnson.
Well, yes, thank you for her. I don't know if this is still being considered, but one, um, I saw a proposal to move the elections to uh November instead of April. And I just want to remind the commission that was recently voted on. And one of the reasons the city voted it down, we can't move uh school board elections. That's a state law, that's state discretion. And also, one of the, um, I don't like that proposal is because I like to do my research of candidates. So one of the problems with uh moving the election, having everything on one ballot, um, when it's presidential time, people miss or su- surprise when down ticket candidates come. Um, sometimes voters will show up and be surprised to find a judge or uh a- anything downtown. Um, with it ways and now, um, people voting for presidential and um Senate Governor on the presidential this November and then come back March and April, they can do their research for mayor. this November, and then come back March and April, they can do their research for mayor and sit, and mayor and say to all the person. And with that stagger turn, people can be a more firm, informed voter. I also sent you a proposal that I believe we should prohibit the police chief from taking private money as wages. I was surprised to learn recently that, I mean, this is the first time the police chief did this, where they accepted private money as wages from the police foundation. Normally, the police foundation is used to fund like stuff, items, but never as wages, and I call that a conflict of interests. So, that's, those are the, the two things. Let me see what else do I want to point out. Yes, those are the two main issues that I want to bring to you right now, and guess I'll wait for question, anyone? Have some questions?
No questions. Thank you, Damian. So, we have come to the end of those who had their hands raised. And if those of who had already spoken, if you could go ahead and lower your hands for us. I will allow just a minute or two if, if you would like to speak. Now is your opportunity to raise your hand and be heard. Okay, thank you to those who have shared up to this point. We really appreciate your input. And now, let's see, I will entertain a motion to move forward with the agenda to public comment, or sorry, to vote on the amendment proposals at this time.
Motion to move forward to vote on the recommendations.
Second.
Thank you.
Would you like me to call roll, or do we have discussion chair?
Call the roll, please.
Very good. Okay. When I call your name, if you could say aye or nay. Chair Bobo?
Aye.
The Vice Chair Sheridan?
Aye.
The Parliamentarian Garth?
Aye.
The Commissioner Crossland?
Aye.
Commissioner Dwight?
Aye.
Commissioner Grant?
Aye.
Commissioner Nolan Echols?
Aye.
Commissioner Riley?
Aye.
And Secretary and Tagliata, aye.
Excellent. Thank you very much, Secretary and Tagliata. So, last Tuesday, July 2nd, this commission met and decided to move forward with a final vote out on five proposals, which in, in actuality is seven, based on variations of the two proposals. So, I'm gonna read through them, then we're going to vote, and then we'll move forward from there. So, the proposals are as follows. Create an Office of Public Advocate. So, we had two versions of that proposal, one from Commissioner Grant and one from Commissioner Nolan Echols. We had another proposal to provide the Board of Aldermen with increased budget authority, which was proposed by Commissioner Grant. We had a proposal to create a public, or to create a Department of Transportation, rather, supplanting the city's existing department of streets, which was also proposed by Commissioner Grant. Election reforms with, this is the, the next proposal, is election reforms with a proposal for even years and a proposal for odd years, which were both proposed by Secretary and Tagliata. And then finally, language modernization, which was proposed by Commissioner Crossland. So, on Wednesday, July 3rd, the City Council's Office hosted a series of scheduled drafting meetings with a few of the commissioners based on Secretary and Tagliata's friendly amendment to Commissioner Crossland's original motion from our mid-June meeting. The Charter Commission staff published the draft ordinances that resulted from those meetings on Wednesday, July 3rd. And so, that was also uploaded, uploaded to our public-facing website on that day as well, July 3rd, with a copy of those draft ordinances. So, with that, what I'm going to do now is move through each draft ordinance, and we will vote on them. Okay, so, I would like to begin with the Office of Public Advocate. Do any commissioners have comments or motions related to the draft ordinances for the Office of Public Advocate submitted by Commissioner Grant?
Yes.
Okay.
I would like a well, maybe I have a point of information. My point of information is a synopsis on the phone call for legal advice, in which we all received individually related to the concerns and the advice against this recommendation from the City Council's Office, if you could.
Okay, I'm not sure she would want to do a comment like that in this setting.
I will just say that I did not recommend against this proposal that I provided legal advice, but I did not recommend against this proposal. Just for clarity, I have not recommended for or against any proposal throughout this entire process.
Thank you.
Well, my question and my point of information was not to Shana Hamilton, to the City Council, it was to the commission to discuss the legal advice that we did receive related to this proposal prior to moving forward. So, I will discuss it. What I understand from what I was informed is that the proposal as it's written, there is conflict, there is a bill on the governor's desk related to the powers that be related to this function and the functions listed in this proposal. Therefore, I do not think it's in the best interest of this commission to continue to proceed with this proposal, given the fact that there is already authority being given by the governor's office for said functions or activities that are reflected in this proposal that do not need to be reflected in our charter.
Okay, so, I think I'll go in order of the hands that I saw raised. Commissioner Grant, Commissioner Crossland, Commissioner Dwight, we'll go in that order.
Okay, thank, thank you, everybody. I just, first of all, I wanna start we, we've been at this for eleven months, and thank you, everybody, for your dedication. We have heard from many members of the public, from experts, from city officials, heard from all of you. I know we have our disagreements, but I, I, it's been a pleasure to work with everybody here, and I have certainly learned a lot about the functions of city government, and I, I hope to make them better. But, so, I, I just wanna respond. I circulated earlier today a slight, a revised proposal related to the public advocates position, which really was not major substantive changes, but what I thought, you know, would, would, would help with the proposal, which would delay its implementation until whenever the new election cycle is going to be set, or if it doesn't change, but delay its implementation till for four years. And that also clarified some issues related to access to documents and subpoena power, and also would require a the public advocate to present to the Board of Alderpersons an annual report summarizing its activities. So, I'd encourage everybody to look at that. As far as what Ms. Nolan Echols pointed out, I, I, I am not aware of any legal, formal legal advice saying that this proposal somehow is unconstitutional or preempted by state law, at least as it exists right now. I, I will say this. One thing I did add in my proposal was a severability clause, which would mean that in the event any provision is found invalid, that the remaining provisions remain valid and aren't affected thereby. And that's a very common in legislation. That said, I, I just wanna say a couple of things. And this actually, my comments here really cover all these proposals, you know. We've heard again, again from the, the public tonight, and, and I very much appreciate everyone taking the time to make their comments. What, it seems, everybody thinks there are problems with the city, right? And no one said here, we should, we should not do anything to address those problems. And no one appears to be happy with the status quo in this city, as far as the operation of city government and the provision of services and transparency and accountability. And as Alderperson Aldridge pointed out, and Commissioner Garth, we can't extend our time, right? The commission expires a year from when it started, which is in August. And so, we cease to exist after that point. We can't extend our time. The work of this commission is done. And I also wanna point out what, what, or, or, or reemphasize what Alderperson Aldridge mentioned out, we are referring things to the Board of Aldermen. Now, I think that's very important, right? We are sending a message that changes are necessary and important, that the status quo is not acceptable. And so, it is important for us to send items with support to the Board of Aldermen, and they will get further discussion there, and the public will get further input. And the Board of Aldermen, if necessary, can modify or amend our proposals. But I think it's very important to send proposals to the Board, whi- which is a message that the status quo is not acceptable. And that also goes to, to our charge under the ordinance. We have responsibilities, I believe, to advance proposals, which we think will improve city functions and make government more transparent. A number, Mr. Cummings mentioned, you know, the, the problem, like the charter isn't the cause of black families leaving the city. I, I don't entirely agree with that. I think, I think why families are leaving the city, why we're losing population is we want better services, and we want better public input. And we want better accountability from our elected officials and, and from the bureaucracy. And we're not getting that right now. And part of the reason of that is the structure of the charter. And I, my opinion is that the public advocate proposal and the proposal on giving the Board budgeting authority and the proposal on the Department of Transportation will lead to better services, which will help keep families in the city. It makes, for instance, complaints about the police and refuse and streets can be given to the public advocate for investigation and findings. That, we don't have an independent authority right now in the city to do those sorts of things. It provides for better public input. The public advocate position creates an Office of Public Engagement, whose sole purpose, purpose is to facilitate and find people in the public who, who want to improve the city and to find public people in the public who will help to serve on commissions and boards and to facilitate their roles. We don't have that right now, right? That's very important. That will increase public and civic engagement and improve government in our city. And we want greater accountability. We will have, you know, the Board with budgeting authority, which these are the elected officials who are closest to the constituents in this city, who are making the decisions that in, affect the people in their wards, and we want them accountable for decisions, and that includes spending. And so, we should empower these people to be able to increase the budget and, as well as decrease the budget, and then held responsible for that. And, and that, to me, is greater transparency and greater accountability. And so, I, I just, for all three of the proposals, I, I think that's just very important to, to remember. And, and I would just, I, I would ask for the commissioners to support all three of the proposals and to send them to the Board of Aldermen where they can get further discussion and debate, and hopefully passage to improve our city. So, with that, if anyone has any questions, I'm happy to answer them.
Well, Commissioner Crossland was, was next, and I believe she had her hand raised, so I will yield the floor to her, and then we can go to Commissioner Dwight, and then Commissioner Riley, and then Nolan Echols again.
I just wanted to re, I, first of all, support a hundred percent everything that Commissioner Grant just, just said so eloquently and don't intend to repeat his remarks, which I think we're right, right on target in terms of so many things that we've discussed this year and have been discussing recently in these meetings. Just to reiterate that the vote tonight to move some of these or all of these amendments forward to the Board of Aldermen is not a vote against waiting. It is a vote that we think these proposed amendments have merit, that they may not be perfect right now, but that the next step then is for them to move on to the Board of Aldermen, where the Board of Aldermen will choose to either move some of them forward to the mayor for signature and onto the ballot, or may delay some of them and move them in future elections forward and onto the ballot, or may table some of these permanently. That, that's their choice at that point. Our choice is simply, as Commissioner Grant says, to do the best job we can to highlight the importance of some of these potential amendments. Then, the next step is to let the Aldermen decide from there based on their feedback as an, or, as, as, as an entity, as, as the legislative branch of the city, and as representatives of their constituents, which ones it makes sense to move forward, in what kind of sequence, and then to go from there. Thank you.
Thank you. Commissioner Dwight?
I, I lowered my hand because the comments of Commissioner Grant and Crossland spoke to it.
Excellent, okay. Commissioner Riley, and then Commissioner Nolan Echols, and then I also saw Commissioner Sheridan. Oh, and Commissioner and Tagliata, I didn't, I didn't miss you, okay.
I, I do, I wanna echo what has already been said. Thank you to each of you, fellow commissioners, for the time we spent together over the past year. But it's been a joy to learn about our city together and to put forth what we see before us as recommendations tonight. There were hours of work put into these drafts, particularly to Commissioners Grant and Integliata and Crossland. Thank you for the time you have invested. So, I wanna share, what I'm gonna share tonight is not personal, the questions that I have, the comments, not personal. I think that I agree with all of you on the high ideals in many of these recommendations that have been put forward. I think we may disagree on the implementation of some of these ideals. And I don't think that our role was to put forth ideas for the Board to pick apart. I really have been reflecting upon from Alderwoman Annie Rice's comments last week to put forth recommendations that have been fully vetted, fully thought through. And I have some questions. The question I have for, cuz there are two versions of this particular proposal, and I'll save my, my others. And I have a question for Commissioner Nolan Echols, I'll ask later. But to Commissioner Grant, line nineteen and twenty around funding, around funding. So, the, the, the amount that we are proposing here, is this from the Director Personnel, is this from the Budget Director? Do we, where's this money coming from? How are we gonna allocate these funds? I, I think we'd have a amount, amount listed here, but how, how do we know we have the money and that this is enough to be allocated?
So, the, the proposal states that the city budget must include appropriations for the Office of Public Advocate in an amount no less than the operating budget for the Department of Personnel from the General Fund. And that's so, just so everyone in the public who's listening understands, that's in reference to a line item in the existing budget under, for the Department of Personnel from the General Fund. I, I don't recall the exact amount, but I, I have looked, and I know, you know, Ms. Ms. Hamilton helped me find that amount. And maybe she has it offhand, but I, I, I
I do.
Okay, maybe, so maybe you can tell us what it is.
Yeah, so our City Department of Personnel, if I'm, and if I'm mistaken, Director Gray, please correct me, but has a budget of fifty-four employees and in excess of five million dollars in that schedule.
So um. Is that, is that the correct amount from the general fund or is that the entire amount?
That is correct. The entire amount is over a hundred million because it includes pension and benefits. So if you exclude. Those pieces, then the the schedule that you are referring to is in excess of five million dollars.
Okay, so uh, Commissioner Riley, is there, where does the money come from? I mean, I guess with any. Uh, increase in city services or functions, it's going to have to come from somewhere, right? Uh, we, you know, uh. And the point, though, of having. A designated appropriation is to protect the independence of the Public Advocate's Office. So that it can't essentially be neutered by taking its money away, that the role is so important. As far as the um. The uh provisions of services to facilitate public input and. And handle uh sunshine matters and audits that we think they should have a dedicated stream of funding. That's very much like. Uh, there are a few other, at least one other uh department in the city which has a very similar language. Um, you know, but uh, it, you know, we can't say where that money comes from. You're right about that.
Do we know it'll be enough?
I I I don't, I I know there's, you know, I. Do we run, uh, uh, does the city have a lot of money in reserves? Yes, but that's a, that's a budgeting decision that uh, that I can't answer.
Right. Uh, Commissioner Nolan Echols, in your proposal, you asked that the public advocate be appointed by the mayor? Why that change?
Because this commission for, since its inception, has wanted to eliminate other elected offices and the actual term is abolished. The other elected offices. So for me, it does not make sense to make another elected office in the city of St. Louis. The public. Has asked for that not to be the case. The mayor has asked for that not to be the case. So I don't understand why we would put forth a proposal in which we do not have the support of the mayor or the public to do in that way.
When you say we know the support of the public, I I heard a lot of feedback last week around more transparency, accountability. And uh, an independent way to to do that. It wasn't named in this way because of the comptroller, I think, a language. Something kind of muddied that conversation, but I did hear language around more transparency. Secondly, I didn't see anything in here about funding. What were your thoughts about how the position would be funded, the department?
My issue with these proposals related to the public advocate is there has not been enough vetting, which I mentioned last week. Around the financial operational structure of said department or functionality or its activities. Transparency and accountability by way of what the public is asking for is not with a new and another and additional elected office. That is not what the public, in my transcriptions of everything we've been sent, has been asked for. In addition to that. This particular proposal, the public has not seen. This updated proposal, the public has not seen. So we absolutely cannot put forth, per the ordinance. Proposals and recommendations that have not been effectively vetted or appropriately in a position to be implemented.
I I would absolutely disagree with that. We, there's no, we have. Excuse me, let me speak.
I wasn't finished.
Okay, I wa- I just absolutely.
To finish my statement in which I was saying, Commissioner Riley. In the webinar chat we see here by Commissioner Ham- I mean Commissioner Hamilton, City Council Hamilton, this particular updated recommendation. Has not, the public has not seen it. Therefore, per ordinance, we are required to conduct a public hearing for the public to receive and or see and or communicate their perspective. On all of our proposals and recommendations. That has not happened with these new additions that we got on today. So it's just, we have to make sure that we're completely vetting. Things accordingly and in the questions that you're asking, we don't have the answers to, which means the effective vetting for all aspects of implementation have in fact not been done.
It sounds like you don't have.
I would like to intervene here. I I would absolutely.
Sorry, Commissioner Bobo.
Yeah.
It's, so you said that we don't have the answers and I think. Based on your. Uh, statement just now, it sounds like you also. Perhaps don't have the answer. Is that, is that correct?
Financial section was not in my proposal when I met on last week with City Council.
Correct. Yeah, we're saying the same things. Commissioner Grant?
We should not be proposing anything that we have not effectively vetted.
So why did you propose it?
He just told you that it's not in my proposal.
Right.
Thank you.
Okay, uh, Commissioner Riley, did you have additional questions and comments or?
Um, thank you, Commissioner Grant, for the, for answering my question. Thank you, Commissioner Nolan Echols, for answering my question. Uh, again, I think that overall the, there's a need for uh, some sort of. Um, auditor, public advocate. I think there's a reason why only New York City has one department as such. I'm not sure at this time in our city's history, this particular thing is what is needed, but I do agree with the ideal of this department. Thank you.
Thank you. Commissioner Grant? Or were you responding to that or do you want me to go to?
I just wanted to respond to uh, Ms. Nolan Echols' comment, uh.
Go ahead.
Which is, what the ordinance requires is that the draft of a proposed charter minute be made publicly available no less than fourteen days. Or two weeks prior to the required public hearing. We did that. A draft doesn't mean a final version and in fact, it would be. Irresponsible for us not to continue to refine proposals to make them better as we approach the deadline, so. I'll just.
Thank you, Commissioner Grant. Commissioner Intagliata? I didn't miss you.
Thank you, Chair. Uh, I just want to make the point, uh, I think that Commissioner Grant's. Public Advocate recommendation is excellent. It's well thought through. It's, it's been. Changed and improved over time. And very importantly, and I think that this needs to be unequivocally said. Is that the public advocate as drafted by Commissioner Grant and his recommendation. Is an additional office. It does not eliminate the comptroller and it does not detract from comptroller duties. It does not. It does not replace the comptroller, eliminate them or detract from them. So let's just be super clear on that moving forward. Is that, is that correct, Commissioner Grant?
That is correct. There is actually language written in. The proposal that was uh. Distributed by the City Councilor saying nothing in this article detracts or modifies from the duties and responsibilities of the comptroller.
Thank you.
Um, I'd like to recognize Nadric Tinkins to speak.
Thank you. Excuse me. I'll just add a little bit to that. Some of the duties that you mentioned under the public advocate do fall under comptroller currently, such as the sunshine. Um, requests. I actually fulfill those requests in in the absence of our public information officer. Uh, as well as. In order to fulfill those sunshine requests. Uh, the public advocate would need access to the vault uh, where. The public information is stored uh, in the comptroller's office as well. So that should be considered uh, in the co- in this conversation.
And and I'll just answer that. I'm glad you raised that, Mr. Tinkins, because the proposal that I circulated. Uh, addresses that very issue and it states that in the event a department, division, board, commission. Agency or other subunit of the city appoints its own custodian of records. It shall forward copies of sunrun sunshine requests to the public advocate and cooperate. And coordinate with the public advocate in responding to requests. That's very much similar to the current. Coordinator position that's kind of handled by Joseph Sims, where he actually. Will work with the custodian of records from each department in uh, compiling and completing requests. Um. So I just want to make sure that that that's something that that has been added to the revised proposal and I think i- improves it as well.
Thank you. So we've had discussion on this. Um, and again, I think for clarity's sake, we do have two different proposals that. Uh, around the public advocate that we can either move forward for the Board of Aldermen or not. Um, so we can at this time uh, entertain motions if if. Uh, you all would like to for, I'm going to start with Commissioner Grant, Office of Public Advocate proposal. I'll entertain any motions related to that.
I'd like to make a motion for this commission to approve Commissioner Grant's recommendation for public advocate.
And can you be?
I would just make a.
Yeah, go ahead. You're probably going to say what I'm going to say.
That I. Would want to substitute. My revised proposal. Circulated earlier today for the one that was. Uh, distributed last Wednesday.
Thank you for that clarity. So commission, I'd like to make a motion. That this commission accept Commissioner Grant's proposal. For the creation of a public advocate as as redrafted and updated today.
Just so I'm clear, it's the one in the meeting packet dated July eighth. Is that correct?
Well, he sent, Commissioner Grant sent some additional. Uh. Context by email to the commission today. And I'm not sure if that was included in that.
Well, I object to the consideration of this question. Given the fact that the proposal was sent today and has not been distributed to the public.
Okay, so do we have a second on the motion?
It does not require a second. It requires a vote of each individual member called separately.
We have to get a second before we can vote, so.
Our Roberts Rule of Order requires a call for the division.
There is a motion on the table before we get to that.
Thank you. Do we have a second for that?
Second?
Thank you. Commissioner Intagliata, can you go through roll, please?
The motion has been made and seconded to. Approve Commissioner Grant's recommendation for the public advocate is updated today. Um, the please uh, say aye or nay when I call your name, Chair Bobo.
Aye.
Uh, Vice Chair Sheridan.
Aye.
The Parliamentarian Garth.
Abstain.
The um, Commissioner Crossland.
She said aye, she was on mute.
Aye.
I'm sorry. Commissioner Dwight?
Aye.
Right. Commissioner Grant?
Aye.
Commissioner Nolan Echols?
Nay.
Commissioner Riley?
Abstain.
And Secretary Intagliata is an aye. That is one, two, three, four, five, six, aye votes, Chair.
Thank you. The motion carries. So now we will uh, entertain a motion or any discussion, any further discussion around. Uh, the Nolan Echols Office of Public Advocate proposal.
Your parliamentarian should be telling you to entertain the motion that then followed at this time.
He's not doing that, so. Would anyone like to make a motion on uh, Commissioner Nolan?
Or nay, your rules or regulations require you to. Abide by Roberts Rule of Order, which is what is on the floor at the current moment. The motion that I moved does not require a second. It requires a vote.
Could you repeat what you said earlier?
Yeah. What I said earlier is I object to the consideration of this question. Given the fact that the public has not seen the proposal sent at three P M. Today.
Okay. Um. I guess we can move on to the next proposal. Um, let's see.
And just, just to be clear, like, my understanding is we followed our procedure. We. Submitted them as required by our ordinance. Uh, in full draft language for a a public. Um, hearing to receive feedback. We received that. In our, in our meeting the next day, we agreed together as commissioners in hearing that public feedback to take the time until today's meeting. To process any revisions or changes based on that feedback that then we vote on today and Commissioner Grant. Supplied us with what those changes were before we voted on it.
I'm going to read a statement from Shannon Hamilton that is in our chat. It says, Commissioners. I want to note that my office has not done legal review on or provided any advice on Commissioner. Grant's most recent draft on the public advocate. This pub- the public has not seen. This version either, just an F Y I.
Thank you for reading that. Um, okay, so like I mentioned, we can move to the Board of Aldermen with increased budget authority was proposed by Commissioner Grant as well. Do any commissioners have comments or motions related to that draft ordinance? We can hear those now. Okay, so I'm going to go in order of hand raised, Commissioner Riley, then Commissioner Dwight.
Again, thank you for this recommendation. My my only question is around the removal of the checks and balances. Because we're giving them authority to increase, increase and decrease without recommendation from the Board of V and A. And it's clear here that we're removing that check from the process so that now. The Board of V and A, all its purposes is now in charge of the budget without oversight. So that's my concern. Um, I agree with increasing the budget and decreasing authority both, but with some checks and balances with having. Uh, that that check to make sure we're having a balanced budget. So just just curious as to why that was added.
Commissioner Grant, would you like to answer to that?
So uh, what this proposal will do and it it somewhat mirrors a a proposal that the Board of Aldermen is considering right now. To, w- w- first of all, it keeps the Board of V and A. Uh, and uh, it it keeps the current budgeting process to the extent of how a budget is developed and presented. All of this, what this changes is just really two, two things. Like, it just says that in addition to decreasing items, that the Board of Aldermen may. Increase items and add new line items. And uh, which it can't currently do except through these behind the scenes. Uh, hidden communications uh, with the Board of V and A. Uh, but it brings that process out into the light because an ordinance could be actually amended, you know, by the board on the floor by adding items or increasing items. And then what this does is just says that ordinance gets passed just like any other ordinance, right? It 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 just needs. Approval by the board and then approval of the mayor and it could be vetoed by the mayor. So I still think there's a check there, right? The mayor, if there is spending which the mayor deems to be excessive or not frugal. Uh, the mayor can veto the proposal and then it needs the. Required super majority to 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 be passed over the mayor's veto. So. I think this process is is very common for most municipalities, right? Um, and uh, I think it restores uh, the s- 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 some power to our local elected officials. So. I I would push back on the notion that uh, it's, it removes a check. What I would say is that it increases transparency so that the taxpayers can hold accountable. Uh, their local elected officials for spending decisions.
But to be clear, the Board of V and A meetings are also public. And both the. The com- without the comptroller, the mayor and the president of the Board of Aldermen are all elected officials as well.
That is correct, but as described us like dur- during uh, during our work group sessions, right now, how. The only way that Alderpeople can. Get increases as items is to go to. The president of the Board of Aldermen or the mayor or the comptroller have one-on-one discussions about increasing items and those are then presented. They're sort of these. Behind the scene ceiling and I don't mean to denigrate that in any way, but that's just, that's the only way that can happen right now. And you are right, the Board of V and A is definitely open, right? And transparent, but I I think these behind the scene discussions, we want to bring them out into the light.
Thank you.
Commissioner Dwight?
Thank you. Um, I think my my question was going to be similar about a process just to make sure I I understood it that. In our current process, is it correct that the Board of Alder is. in our current process, is it correct that the Board of Alders still does the final ordinance passing of the budget? They just don't have power to increase line items. Is that right? Like, that part of the process is still the same. They just earlier in it now are able to also increase as E and A is, as it goes back and forth with E and A. Is that right?
That, that is true, except with the current process, they need the recommendation of the Board of V and A to pass that ordinance. In this case, they would not if they added an increase to an item that the Board of V and A rejected.
Right, and in that conversation with E and A, E and A still has the power to make changes in that exchange before the final budget needs to be approved. Is that right?
Sorry, let me, I want to make sure I understood that question. Can you say that again, David?
Um, that previously that authority to raise line items in the budget sat with E and A, right? And the, and the Board of Alder didn't have power to do that independently, correct?
That is my understanding, yes.
And so that power still exists. The Board of Alder just also has the power now.
Yes, so the language says they may increase the amount of any item. They remove items and may insert new items without requiring any recommendation of the Board of Estimative Enforcement.
Got it. Thank you. That's helpful.
Uh, Commissioner Nolan Echols?
Can you recall when the Alder people, the other person spoke to having an ordinance related to this matter, this issue, and it not necessarily needing to be reflected in the charter as a result? Okay, that was, that was spoken to last week. And based on the emails, the bills and ordinance that I'm looking at, that is what they were referencing.
Commissioner Dwight, did you have a comment to that?
Yeah, I believe that was Alder um Machine Aldridge that had spoken to that last time, and I think uh he had said, hey, we saw that this is something that you all had put on your draft list. We know it's gonna be a tight timeline on the other side of us sending our recommendations out. So they wanted to start moving on creating some of those bills and ordinances in the meantime. Uh, and I'm pretty sure the Alder didn't dissuade us from passing it if, if we approved it. He was like, no, we see this as generative, like this is a, a positive uh give and taking conversation.
Nadir Tinkins?
Yes, the board bill in question, I believe it's uh introduced by Ald- Alderman Aldridge. It's board bill thirty that um has been introduced and it's uh aimed to give the Aldermen and women the power to increase that budgeted line item.
Thank you for that context as well. Any other questions or comments around this? Okay, seeing no hands raised, um, we can now entertain a motion related to the draft ordinance around Board of Aldermen with increased budget authority. Um, I'll yield the floor to any motions around that.
Show moved.
Second.
Okay, it has been moved and properly seconded. Commissioner, um, Secretary Intagliata, rather, can you take the role, please?
Happy to.
And do, do you just want to clarify what you're moving?
Yes, the uh uh I'm a motion to uh agree with Commissioner Grant's recommendation to provide budget increase authority to the Board of Aldermen.
Without recommendation from the Board of V and A.
With, yes, yes, without, without recommendations from the Board of V and A. That motion has been made and seconded. I'm going to call the roll. And I'd ask that if you're in favor, please say aye. If you're opposed, please say nay. Uh Chairman Bobo.
Aye.
Vice Chair Sheridan.
Aye.
Uh Parliamentarian Garth.
Aye.
Commissioner Crossland.
Aye.
Commissioner Dwight.
Aye.
Commissioner Grant.
Aye.
Commissioner Nolan Echols.
Aye.
Pardon me?
Nay.
Nay, thank you. Commissioner Riley.
Nay.
Secretary Intagliata, aye. Two, three, four, five, six, seven. Uh Madam Chair, uh seven ayes.
Excellent. The motion carries. Thank you. So now, uh, I now move to um have a discussion or any motions related to the Department of Transportation, which was proposed by Commissioner Grant. Uh, we can have discussions or motions related to that at this time.
To, to be clear, um, we are, as we approve this, we're also, as Chris Grant mentioned earlier, we're also thereby directing the Budget Director, the Department of, uh Director, Department Personnel, et cetera, to do all their diligence to make this happen by the deadline we've set for. Is that automatically attached to the bill?
Uh, Commissioner Grant would probably be the best, best person to answer that. I believe that there are timelines attached to it that would be included. Is that correct, Commissioner Grant?
Twenty twenty-seven.
Twenty twenty-seven?
Yeah, Jan- January.
Is it January one? Yeah.
January one, twenty twenty-seven.
Oh, it was July. Okay.
July one, twenty twenty-seven, I think because I would align with the budget cycle.
Yeah.
Sorry, yeah, I misspoke, yes, so.
July.
Yeah. Thank you, David.
Commissioner Riley, did you have an additional question about that?
Just want to be sure because I, I thought that we had to have everything baked into the ballot amendment. So I want to be clear that even though it's not present here, though, that work will automatically be done as opposed to just a lame kind of amendment out there uh without those provisions. Okay, thank you.
Understood. Thank you. Commissioner Crossland?
Um, just with the caveat, of course, that I mentioned earlier that uh um the Board of Aldermen will be able to change any of the language within these amendments before they send them forward. And so we are suggesting the twenty twenty-seven date, but what they actually select um will be part of their process.
Thank you. Any other questions, comments about this? Okay, um, I will now um entertain a motion around creating, oh, sorry, I see Commissioner Dwight.
No worries. I, I raised my hand uh pretty late. Um, ju- just to say, I appreciate the uh director of the Sheets Department coming to, to speak um and some of the clarifications that came in that dialogue with Commissioner Grant um as well as the testimony that we've received across this time. I think this was actually the area that we got the most amount of public input and feedback in celebrating it, and I, I've spoken with like several advocates in this space that have done transportation work for uh many, many years, and I've, I've heard support uh for this and that it's that kind of centralizing place for transparency as well as a clear area for community voice um and, and to point um uh needs around transportation. And so it's for those reasons that I'm uh excited about this amendment um and from additional community engagement that I've, I've done and heard.
Thank you. And Commissioner Riley, was your hand, is your hand raised again?
Just want to add, it seems very timely, given that we had to have ARPA funds to create a citywide plan that then Ms. Williams can implement with proper funding and staffing that personnel makes sure that we have, so it kind of comes together at the right time if indeed that, that plan's underway by Department of Public, of Public uh Service, so I like it.
Thank you. So I will now, um, are there any other questions I want, or comments around this? I just want to make sure. Okay. Um, I now um entertain a motion. I'll uh move to creating a Department of Transportation, which was proposed by Commissioner Grant.
Second.
I, yes, the motion has been made by the chair and seconded. Okay, I'll now call the roll. Please say aye or nay.
Correction, point of order. The chair cannot make.
Mm-hmm.
Okay.
Yeah.
Chair can't make the motion.
Make it.
I will gladly make the motion to uh approve a Department of Transportation as drafted by Commissioner Grant.
Second.
Thank you. The um, I'll now call the roll. The uh, if you're in favor, please say aye. If you're opposed, please say nay. Chair Bobo.
Aye.
Uh Vice Chair Sheridan.
Aye.
Uh Parliamentarian Garth.
Aye.
Commissioner Crossland.
Aye.
Commissioner Dwight.
Aye.
Commissioner Grant.
Aye.
Commissioner Nolan Echols.
Aye.
Commissioner Riley.
Aye.
Commissioner Intagliata, aye. Secretary Intagliata, aye. It's a unanimous vote, Chair.
Excellent, thank you. So the next one is um around election reforms uh with a proposal for even years uh and one for odd years um, which was proposed by Secretary Intagliata. Do we have any comments or motions related to that draft ordinance? Commissioner Grant?
I, I would just like to, uh Commissioner and, and, and Tagliata to give us his recommendation as to the better one, even or odd years, and why.
Uh, yeah, thank you. The, there is no question in my mind that what I believe is a preferential recommendation is the original one, which is to move to August and November of even years. The um, the and that is because it will increase turnout dramatically. The, and it will also lower the ongoing cost of the election, although that is a benefit, it's a bonus, but increasing turnout, doubling or tripling citywide turnout for these citywide offices is its own great benefit. The biggest complaint that people have is that it's, it's too hard to vote. They can't vote, and then when people don't vote, they're chided for it. We have an opportunity here to have many more people vote, double, triple, even more than that, who normally vote in a citywide election in March and April. The, and that is certainly the preferred option here. The second option, uh Commissioner, uh was suggested to this body, and it came from um a number of folks, largely it was addressed by the mayor in a letter to us. And I would say that that second option is still preferable to March and April elections in, in my lifetime and in yours. A number of those uh elections have been, been marred and altered, and turnout has been affected by uh drastic weather events, generally snow, sleet, uh freezing rain. The, the chances are you're not going to have that in August, and you're not going to have that in early November. Uh, it would certainly be ahistorical. So uh it is by far, though, a secondary recommendation. They, and um, uh, the first one, even years on the federal cycle, is far preferred.
Thank you.
To your question, Chris?
Okay, Commissioner Riley?
Uh, just two points. First of all, this is not for Commissioner Intagliata. This is for the Board of Aldermen when they consider this proposal. Um, I wonder if any research has been done to see the impact of moving to the open nonpartisan system? How that effect, impact that's had on our elections most recently? We don't know that. Um, I just hope they consider that in their deliberations as they move this forward. Um, but it's a good idea. Um, secondly, I, I, while I agree with moving the elections, um, I, I've heard slightly different feedback. I think there are complications around the even numbered year because of the cost of running for office and how accessible that becomes to people who are trying to be seen on the local, local scale, given the other federal statewide elections. And so I'm prepared to make, to make a motion for the odd numbered years. Uh, but of course, we're not, we're not there yet. But I do think that is a major concern to ensure equitable uh distribution of those able to run for office.
And, and com- com- Commissioner, if I can answer that. I, I worked in elected politics. I ran political campaigns for a dozen years. By and large, I ran for outsider candidates, candidates who always had less resources and less ability to raise money than perhaps more mainstream candidates. Uh, in fact, one of the notable races that, that I managed was the election of Freeman Baz, the first black mayor, and we were far outspent by the other three candidates in the race. So however, what we did have is we had enough resources to get our message out. And since they started having elections in ancient Greece, that has been the trend to the degree that you can go out there and enunciate a clear, strong message. You do much better, and money rarely ever holds you back. And again, over seventy, eighty campaigns over a dozen years, I never saw anybody held back by their ability to raise money. I do think that a number of folks in politics are concerned that they're going to have to work a little harder in those cycles to raise money. And to me, that is a very easy trade-off. You can choose not to run for office, or you can go out there and hustle and get your money and get your message out there. But the uh, to, to say it's gonna be harder to get your message out, a lot of times it's hard to get your message out, no matter what. If you have a good one and you work at it, you'll get it out. So.
Thank you. Um, uh Commissioner Dwight, and then I'll go to Commissioner Nolan Echols. You're on mute.
Gotta have at least one time.
I know, I know.
So I'm on the sacrifice for this, for the meeting. Um, uh, I was gonna say that just with either of these, um, just wanted to really highlight the benefit that comes with the mayor happening in November. Um, you know, just in support of pa- passing either one of them and hopefully the board because of the way that the mayor coming in, in the spring leads to an immediate budget cycle, um, which is a, you know, dash uh for any administration and, and doesn't well reflect the people that have then voted in that mayor, popularly elected that mayor. Um, so I, I really support it. I personally lead, mean more towards the odd year, um, uh, but am in support of this set of recommendations.
Understood. Thank you. Commissioner Nolan Echols, and I see Commissioner Grant as well.
I move to accept the mayor's recommendation of moving elections to the even year for August and November as well as modernizing the city charter by way of the recommendations we have proposed.
A little confused. The, the mayor recommended odd numbered years.
I'll read the sentence. I also am in support of the recommendation moving our municipal elections to August and November and keeping such elections in odd number of years instead of moving to even years as has been proposed. So I stand corrected. It is odd years. So my motion with the amendment from Commissioner Riley is to move the elections to the odd years as recommended by the mayor, in addition to modernizing the charger, the charter as the rec- as the commission recommends.
I would second that. I think we have more discussion, though.
Yeah, I think there is more discussion. Commissioner Grant?
Thank you. I, I have a question uh regarding, I just want uh the election for the odd number of years, which is my understanding is that we would have elections as currently scheduled for March and April twenty twenty-five. And then if we go to a system of odd years for November.
And then if we go to a system of odd years for November elections. We would have elections in August and then November twenty twenty-nine. Is that correct?
I, I believe that's right.
So the term of the current mayor. And comptroller would extend beyond four years?
I think by a few months, the next.
Yeah.
This election come next year, so the next.
Would extend beyond.
Three months, right?
Yes.
Yeah.
There is a provision in the Missouri Constitution that limits terms. Of city or county offices, they shall not exceed four years. I, I, I can't, I don't know if that is applicable to the city of St. Louis. But I just want to make sure that that has been considered.
That's a good call out. Commissioner Crossland?
Um, yeah, that actually follows something I had been thinking of and the fact that we might need to set the date. A year earlier for the next election then, in order to stay within the four years. Uh, which would essentially be a three and a half year term instead of a four-year term, um, but something to consider. But as I was sitting here looking at the positives and negatives and listening to Commissioner Intagliata's. Um, comments about both, uh, both even and odd having value. Um, it seemed to me that in this case, um, since we have two. Um, proposed amendments that are really very similar, the only difference is whether it's even or odd. That we prioritize, um, you know, even the first, odd second. And that we vote then to forward both of them to the Board of Aldermen so that they could further deliberate and, um. And decide at that point which one, if either, um, makes sense to them.
I think that also goes back to something that Commissioner Riley brought up earlier with, um. Alder, former alderperson Rice mentioned kind of having things fully vetted and, and ready to go to the, to the BOA, so. Um, I, I think that that's an, an interesting point, um, and probably a, a way to package this up. Um, so that they can decide amongst themselves. Uh, Commissioner Dwight?
Um, this is something small that I think is just a copy editing error. Um, but in the, uh, election reforms odd section that starts on page thirty-six. If you then go down to page forty-one where it has the ballot language, it says even. On line twenty-two, so I think that's just a copy editing error. Um. The rest of it reads true if it, if that's even is changed to odd.
Understood. So do we have any motions related to, or is there any other, um?
There's a motion on the floor.
Okay.
An inversion on the floor.
Okay, has anyone seconded that?
It has been seconded and so we would have to either vote that up or down and then decide if we were gonna have another one based on what we do.
Okay. Um, just for, for the record sake, can we restate the original motion?
Well, and, and also, if we agree to this proposal on odd. Does it in any way keep us from also agreeing to send even year election reform to the Board of Alderman?
We could do it separately or we could do it together.
Doesn't mean that we can't.
And they can change it themselves as well, so we have more.
There may be another alternative, right?
But, but, uh, to be, to be fair, uh, Commissioner Riley, I wanna make sure that the even year. Is sent across if this body votes that as well. I'm happy to vote in favor of an odd year, send along and let them do what they want, but I would like them to receive. An even year recommendation as well.
Is that a friendly amendment?
Yes, it is.
Sounds like a friendly amendment. Okay, excellent. Can we restate them? Oh, go ahead, Councillor, uh, Councillor Hamilton.
Commissioner Nolan Echols, do you accept a friendly amendment? I wanna make sure that the mayor is saying. She's saying elections to moving elections to August and November and keeping such elections in odd number of years. Instead of moving to even years as has been proposed. So that means she's in favor for. Odd number of years, correct?
Yes.
Okay, so I do not accept the friendly amendment.
Okay, so I would ask a point of clarification then from, uh, Councillor Hamilton. Does voting in favor or opposed to this recommendation? Keep this body from also making a motion seconding and passing an even years recommendation?
No.
Thank you. Okay, so there's a motion.
Restate the motion. Commissioner, talk in.
Okay.
There's a motion, uh, in front of this commission to, uh, accept election reform. To August and November of odd numbered years. The, with the, uh, proofreading caveat that Commissioner Dwight pointed out. So.
Also includes the modernization recommendation and proposal. It's together.
That's, that's a separate one.
That's a separate.
Separate.
My motion was for the recommendations that the mayor put forth with, which includes both.
Okay, you didn't state that originally.
That's what I stated originally.
It was dated the first time and the second time in the actual motion, the modernization was dropped.
So, the, we are, uh, as I understand it, w- we are voting on. A motion to accept electoral reform. In odd numbered years on the August and November schedule. The motion has been made and seconded.
She'd have to withdraw her motion.
Okay.
Because what I seconded included the modernization piece.
Thank you, Commissioner.
You'll have to, y- y- you will have to, um. Withdraw the motion and then reconsider or basically restate your motion.
Okay.
Thank you. In restate my motion. It is to approve. To approve the mayor's recommendation of the voting reform for the odd years. With moving elections to August and November as well as. The modernization of the charter as proposed by this commission.
Well, did you withdraw the original, um, that you made?
Yes, she did.
Okay, excellent.
Thanks. Okay, so there is a motion on the table. Has that been seconded?
But does that, can I ask for clarification first? If we leave modernization in this one, then when we. Add an additional amendment with the even dated years. We will have to add the modernization statement to that as well. Because it's separate. See, the modernization is a separate amendment anyway, a, a ba- a bundle and so. By bundling them together like that.
This is, this is Eddie Roth's, this is Eddie Roth speaking. Um, the electoral reform packet. Includes not just changing the dates, but includes making the county offices except for the, uh, circuit attorney. Under the, uh, the new voting system and also, uh, changes the name of the Board of Aldermen. To the city council. And so I think those are the modernization. That are being referred to in connection with the electoral reform, not the, the, the broad.
Not the, not the language modernization, uh, amendment.
Although there is a language modernization provision here with Bo- Board of Aldermen going to. But the, the proposals in the draft board bill sp- spell out the. Entirety of, of the details.
Great, thank you.
Um, I see Commissioner Dwight and then Councillor Hamilton.
Uh, just that if, if the motion is including our updates on pronoun usage, i- is that? Is that what's, no, okay, the modernization that.
That's different. Clarification on, right.
Thank you.
Okay, Councillor Hamilton, it looks like you quick load your hand, so I'll.
I was just trying to clarify with the proponent of the motion, what was intended to be included. That, that, but it sounds like you all have decided what you. Regardless of what you think.
Mm-hmm, okay.
That is correct.
Yeah.
Okay, so.
I'm, I'm not so sure that we can get the minutes right if you don't just do what she's asking or vote it down or whatever. Um, she is not saying what you're saying. It's very clear.
Yeah, no.
Yeah.
And the mayor's letter was not explicit.
Can we allow her to speak?
I'm sure, by all means, please.
Thank you, Commissioner Riley. What the mayor's recommendation states is as follows. I believe the commission should advance the recommendation to modernize the charter language to update pronouns to titles of offices. Update methods of advertisement, remove obsolete language, reflect modern titles of offices and officers. And provide the compens- compensation to be set by ordinance. That is what her recommendation says related to the language and it's also in alignment with. The proposal we put forth to modernize the charter.
And, and that is not the modernization component that's part of the, um, elections component. Or not, not in, in its entirety, yeah.
Go ahead, Dave. I think that's me, Commissioner Riley, or, you go, you go ahead, Mr. Riley.
Uh, Commissioner Nolan Echols, I, I think, I think what's confusing that the entirety of the team. Is the mayor's language is different from the language in our meeting packet today.
Mm-hmm.
Uh, today's meeting packet on page thirty-six has elections reform as title for the entire section. And then on page forty-seven, language modernization as an entire new section, that's by, by Commissioner Crossland. So just to keep the language consistent, I think if you would say elections reform and language modernization, it'd be clear to. Those who are keeping record that you mean those two different amendments.
Okay.
Right.
Thank you.
So election reform at odd number of years and then language modernization.
Well, the, the motion language can read as such for the minute. I move to accept the mayor's recommendation on voting reform and language reform.
Oh, two different, i- and just to be specific, uh, Commissioner, two different sections, two different recommendations.
Yes.
I think we need to use the word language modernization so it coincides with the title, um, first of all.
Commissioner Dwight?
And, and just be clear that. It's not the language from the mayor's letter, it's the corresponding. Two sections in our meeting packet.
Yeah, it, it would probably be cleaner if we did not refer. To the mayor's recommendations and we simply refer to our amendments as published. Um, for those two components.
Yes.
Great. So can we amend?
For the purpose of the minutes, I will restate my motion again.
Great.
I move. To accept the, I believe it's odd, odd years. Bolder reform and the language modernization reform. As put forth as proposals this commission.
Excellent.
Great. Okay.
So do we have a second? Okay.
That's seconded? Okay, uh, we have a motion to recommend the odd year electoral. Proposal as well as electoral reform proposal as well as the language modernization. Proposal. The motion has been made and seconded. We'll now call roll. If you are in favor, please say aye.
Do we have just a little bit of discussion?
Sure.
I apologize. We just, because we're lumping them, we didn't have like the same chance to talk about it, so.
True, true.
I just have two, um, changes that are small. They don't change the intent. Um, but I think it, it matches. On page fifty, we use alderman and alderwoman. Instead of the alderperson. In all area, other areas of this amendment, we change it to the alderperson. But on that, on that page, at the bottom of that page, we use alderman and alderwoman several times and just. Uh, in going with what we've heard from LGBTQ advocates as well as, um, having general neutral language. I believe those should be alderperson. The second thing.
Sorry, sorry. Did we not change it to city council and it be council members?
It's, it's in a different section.
Mm-hmm.
Uh, it, it's, it's in a different section, the way that, um, it rewrites the parts of the charter. Still has a, a chunk of it that defines older, older people. And then says that a certain day it switches over to city council and so I just wanted us to be consistent in the language across with alderperson. The, the, on page fifty-nine, a removal of paper publishing, um, is one of the. Um, pieces, the publishing of an abstract, um, and right now we strike that entirely, but I think in line with our modernization is that. It's not that no abstract should be published, but the abstract should be published online on the city's website. Rather than requiring it to be published in a paper.
Yes.
Makes sense.
Okay.
Thank you.
And, uh, we do not use the word newspaper in it. I think we caught, we refer to media outlet, uh, because of. The evolution in, in, uh, in that, uh, um, area.
Good catch. Commissioner Sheridan?
I just want to ask for a point of clarification. Uh, if this is going together, this motion is moving forward as two. Uh, items under one motion. If this motion were not to pass, uh, is it still, we still have the ability to move forward? The modernization language is a separate motion, correct?
Yes.
Thank you.
Okay. The motion has been made, um, seconded. We've had discussion. Um, are we prepared to vote, Madam Chair?
Yes.
Okay. Uh, if you're in favor of the motion, please say aye. If you're opposed, please say nay. Chair Bobo?
Aye.
Vice Chair Sheridan?
Nay.
Parliamentarian Garth?
Pass.
Pass. Uh, Commissioner Crossland?
Aye.
Commissioner Dwight?
Aye.
Commissioner Grant? Pass. Commissioner Nolan Echols?
Aye.
Commissioner Riley?
Aye.
Secretary Intagliata, aye. That is six ayes, Madam Chair.
Excellent, thank you. So, um.
Point of order.
Yes.
Two people did pass, you're supposed to go back to them.
Okay, uh. Parliamentarian Garth?
I'm going to vote no. Nay.
Okay. And then I believe we had another pass, was that, uh, Vice Chair Sheridan?
Commissioner Grant.
Commissioner Grant.
That was an aye.
Okay.
Thank you.
Thank you. I think it might have cut off when you were unmuting. Okay, thank you. Um, and so now, yes, Commissioner Intagliata.
I'd like to make a motion.
Okay.
All right. I would like to, I would like to make a motion to. I would like to, I would like to make a motion to approve electoral reform for even numbered years. The, um, and I look for a second.
Okay.
And one question, do we need to attach the language modification amendment to this one as well? Or since we approved it already in the last one, we're done with it, right?
Right.
Okay, good.
Okay. So the motion on the table is to uh, accept the recommendation to, um, electoral reform with even numbers, August and November. Okay, is there a second?
I seconded.
Thank you. Okay, um, the motion has been made and seconded. I'll call roll now. Um, please, if you're in favor, vote aye. If you're opposed, vote nay. Uh, Chair Bobo?
Aye.
Vice Chair Sheridan?
Aye.
Parliamentarian Garth?
No.
Commissioner Crossland?
Aye.
Commissioner Dwight?
Nay.
Commissioner Grant?
Aye.
Commissioner Nolan Eckles?
Nay.
Commissioner Riley?
Nay.
Secretary Intagliata, aye. Uh, five ayes, Chair.
Thank you. Um, and so now, uh, we have made it through all of the proposals at this, at this point, so we can pat ourselves on the back just a little bit. Um, but, oh, Commissioner or Vice Chair Sheridan? I see that you.
Yeah, thanks. Uh, so we've put all the proposals forward.
Can I, I'm sorry, can I interrupt just for a moment?
Uh, can I ask my question first?
Oh, go, I'm sorry, yeah.
Thank you. Uh, so we've put all the proposals, all the recommendations forward. Two of those are packaged together. How will those be? The ones that are packaged into the odd number of years of voting and the modernization language, how will that be? Uh, I guess digested by the Board of Aldermen and Alderwomen? Is it just, they'll be looking at all the proposals that were passed collectively? Regardless of how they were packaged?
I don't have an answer for that.
Um, I think first, uh, Commissioner Nolan Eccles, did you intend to package those two together or were you just trying to move them both forward?
Move them both forward.
Thank, I, I don't, I didn't hear anything in any of these motions that packaged anything with anything else.
Is that, but, but, but we took, we cast a single vote for both, uh, for both items?
That's right.
And I, I think the language of both, uh, of that language that we passed specifies it as individual ordinances and, and, and ballot language too.
Well, the, the, the problem I have is I want to vote in favor of the, uh, of the language modernization moving forward to the Board of Aldermen, but I wanted, I did not want to vote in favor of the odd number of years. And that we did not have an opportunity to vote on those, to cast two separate votes. So vote nay, uh, looks like the same vote or vote nay on both items.
Yeah, Nolan Eccles, um, packaged them together, so.
Okay.
All right.
Well then, I, um, I would like to make a motion at this point that we move the amendment for language moderis- modernization um, forward, uh, with a, with a positive vote, um, to the Board of Aldermen. Is there a second?
I'm sorry, can I interrupt just for a second?
Yeah, Commissioner Grant had, uh, his hand raised.
So, and this is related to the proposal that passed for the elections on odd number of years, which would have for the mayor, the comptroller and certain alderpeople a term of four years or more. I am very concerned that violates the Missouri Constitution. And I, I would just, I don't know, I think we need to send a message to the, the Board of Aldermen that we would be, if there is a majority of people who support going to an odd number of years, that to save the proposal, they need to amend it to a shorter duration in order to save the proposal and not pass something that could be potentially unconstitutional. So, uh,
A good recommendation.
I, if that's what the odd number of people need to do, then I would suggest they make a motion to that. You know, if the people, you know, want that support for
Could, could you make?
Here, I think that needs to be made.
Could, could you make that motion as a alteration?
Well, um.
Just that we acknowledge that and.
Yeah. Uh, I mean, I think the motion would be as simple as this, uh, that the commission, uh, would, um, recommend to the Board of Aldermen uh, as it relates to the election proposal for odd years, that if it is determined um, that, uh, a term of four more years is unconstitutional, that the Board of Aldermen save the proposal by amending it to make terms to move up the elections to November twenty twenty seven.
Second.
Item for discuss, just, uh, question for discussion. So that would essentially truncate terms then for the incumbents, correct?
I would think so.
Okay.
I think the board can do this anyway when it considers our proposal.
Sure.
But, but, I mean, I just want to make sure the board, are they going to be asking, would we have approved it anyway?
Right, yeah. And members of the board are certainly in the audience tonight, and I'm sure will make note of it, but it's worth voting on. So the motion has been made and seconded. The, uh, I'll call roll. Um, uh, in favor, aye. Uh, opposed, nay. Um, Chair Bobo?
Pass, come back to me.
Thank you. The Vice Chair Sheridan?
Aye.
Uh, Parliamentarian Garth?
It looks like he may have dropped.
Okay, um, Commissioner Crossland?
Aye.
Commissioner Dwight?
Aye.
Commissioner Grant?
Aye.
Commissioner Nolan Eccles? Commissioner?
I believe she dropped.
Okay, very good. Uh, Commissioner Riley?
Staying.
I'm staying.
No, no. Uh, I, I'm sorry, aye.
Aye, okay, very good. Uh, Secretary Intagliata, aye. Uh, Chair Bobo, you passed.
Aye.
Very good. So with that, it is one, two, three, four, five, six, seven ayes, Madam Chair.
Okay, and I see a hand raised by Vice Chair Sheridan?
Yes, I know this, uh, has already passed, this packaged with a, another, uh, recommendation moving forward, but I would like, uh, to make a motion that the, uh, commission separately approves or uh, votes upon, uh, the modernization language to be moved forward with the Board of Aldermen.
Okay, so the language, so you're making a motion that language modernization be recommended in and of itself?
Correct.
Great.
And I'm, I'm very sorry, I'm not sure that that's procedurally correct unless you want to have the losing side do a motion to reconsider. Um.
I'm sorry, I'm sorry, Counselor, I couldn't hear you.
Yeah, I'm not sure that the motion that has been put forward is in order. Um, unless you want to do a motion to reconsider the prior motion that you, you approved. And so I offer as an alternative, um, that the, it, the minutes could reflect your, um, intention to, uh, vote in favor of the language modernization, uh, Vice Chair Sheridan, if that would suffice.
That's fine. I just would like the record to ref, the minutes to reflect that I am in favor of language modernization, but voted, uh, nay. Uh, and against the, uh, odd year elections. Thank you.
Okay, we will make sure that in the record.
Excellent, thank you. I also see Commissioner Grant. You have your hand raised?
Yes, so the, the other thing, so related to this odd year issue, uh, the public advocate proposal, that's, this is the difficulty of trying to do more, you know, different proposals separately, but, uh, the public advocate position that passed, uh, said that there would be the, the election, that the position would be created beginning in twenty twenty-nine and effective that, that general municipal election, that person would be voted, be elected in twenty twenty-nine. Well, if, that, that would work if we, if the November twenty twenty-nine date is constitutional. If it's not and it's truncated, then I would move, my motion is to, to, uh, recommend to the Board of Aldermen that the date set forth for the creation and election uh, for the public advocate aligns with the next date after twenty twenty-five, uh, the election after twenty twenty-five, uh, for the mayor.
Okay.
Second.
Hey, the motion to has been made and seconded to align the public advocate election with the correct term of the other citywide elected officials within Missouri law. Is that what you're saying, Chris?
Other, for, for the election of the, the mayor.
Okay, just, oh, yeah, the, I'm sorry, that's what I meant, but fair enough, okay. With that, so the, uh, the motion has been made. The, and seconded. And I'll call roll. If you are in favor, uh, please say aye. If you're opposed, please say nay, nay. Uh, Chair Bobo?
Aye.
Vice Chair Sheridan?
Aye.
Parliamentarian Garth? He's not here. Uh, Commissioner Crossland?
Aye.
Commissioner Dwight?
Aye.
Commissioner Grant?
Aye.
Commissioner Nolan Eccles? Commissioner Riley?
Staying.
And Secretary Intagliata is an aye. So that is one, two, three, four, five, six ayes, Madam Chair.
Excellent, thank you. Are there any other motions at this time?
Um, I don't know that it needs to be, uh, motion, but I do think some process for us to reflect our learnings from this and feed it back to, I, I don't think it has to be like an official, you know, motion to the, the Board of Alders, but I think supplying them with some reflections on the process and how we think it could be improved for the next time this happens, um, whether that's, you know, extended amount of time, um, budget for public engagement, you know, all those pieces. Um, it would be great for us to do some kind of a way of, of collecting that input.
Um, David, would you, Commissioner, Commissioner Dwight, would you, would you suggest that we all work on ours independently and just have a repository for them or that we try to do a brainstorm sort of altogether or what? How did you?
I'm sorry, Hamilton, did you?
Yeah. How did you do your debrief for, for Ferguson altogether or independently, just with a repository to which we sent everything?
Um, Hunter Hamilton, did you have something you want to say before I answer that?
I was just going to remind you guys, if you're, if you're talking about something written that's different, but I just wanted to remind the commission that the Board of Aldermen did invite you to a committee hearing on, I believe it's the twenty-third. And so it's beyond your commission calendar and you may have an opportunity to accomplish what Commissioner Dwight is trying to accomplish at that time. Um, and I'm not sure if that satisfies, I just wanted to give that reminder that, that you.
That would help. Yeah. What time on the twenty-third?
I'm not sure. I think it's in our email. I'll have to look.
Okay, I'll, I'll check it and see.
Okay.
Okay.
But my, my own sense is in addition to that, because it may not be the same Board of Aldermen who are acting on this in future years, that it would help if we had remarks and, and observations in writing that we could simply deposit somewhere that could be held then, um, uh, for future, future review, reference, et cetera.
And pardon me just a second, but the, uh, on July twenty-third, the hearing will be at two P M. I just got word.
Thank you.
Excellent, thank you. Okay. We will take that under advisement in terms of creating a repository of our learnings. Um, so uh, we're, we're moving forward with those that we, um, approved as a body, um, and received, um, the number of votes that was needed, uh, for the draft board bill, which will go now before the lawmaking body of the City of St. Louis, which is the Board of, um, Board of Aldermen at this, at this point. And then it'll go to, um, qualified voters if it's deemed, um, worthy of that. So with that, our next, uh, agenda item is adjournment. Um, I will, okay.
I'm sorry, did, did we decide we're going to put forth one ballot measure or five? Or will the board decide that? I don't remember, so I apologize for delaying.
No, it's okay. So that's okay. Um.
The, I think the way that we've approved them are separate.
Separate.
Um, all, all the ballot language is for like an individual ballot that we, uh, place for a vote. Um, and then ultimately I think the board gets to decide how they want to.
Although, to be fair, there's nothing that prohibits us from recommending that they take it as one single board bill as well.
I, I would prefer separate.
Okay.
But. Commissioner Crossland?
Well, they also have bills moving through their system, and so it's not just a question of which amendments they choose to move forward from our recommendations, but they'll have their own. And so, you know, it, they're, they're going to have to decide how, how they decide to, to, to present all this.
Commissioner Riley?
I, I'm with you, Chair. I think I prefer them separate as well, but I think I recollect the testimony we received and the advice that they be coupled as one in terms of the public's attention and getting that passed.
So do we want to make me, make a motion that separates them out just clearly so that it's in, in writing and in our minutes? That that's our way of, of submitting them to the Board of Aldermen separately?
Well, I, I, I don't know whether we all agree that separately is the, is the best strategy. Um, and I do, I do recollect, um, in fact, one of our experts talking about how, um, bundling was, was, um, that, that you had a higher degree of acceptance through bundling because people couldn't cherry pick quite the same way, you know, in terms of, oh, I like this one, I don't like that one. Whereas they had to look at the totality that it, how would that, um, improve, uh, improve city government? And so, um, and so I'm, I personally am, 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 uh, in favor of, of bundling.
The other side to that really quickly though is they could strike it all down.
Yeah, yeah.
So.
Been through that too.
Yeah, I mean, they could piecemeal it and I, I believe it, you know, there might be three that they like out of five. That's better chances to me than zero out of five, personally.
Well, what?
Commissioner Intagliata?
Thank you, uh, Chair. Um, what, what I would recommend is that we've made our recommendations. That's really good work and we should be pleased with that. The, uh, the feedback I've received is that the board would like to look at them separately and that by and large they think that one is too complex. I'm assuming that over the many weeks that they will be looking at these, if new evidence comes to light for them, like a poll that shows it's. if new evidence comes to light for them, like a poll that shows it's overwhelming to do it one way or the other, they'll have the ability to change their mind or if they get, you know, input from the public that says it. But they'll certainly have the ability to put them together or keep them apart as they see fit, and that is.
Okay.
Truly.
So that's, we'll leave that up to, we'll leave that up to them? Is that okay?
I think that's great.
Yeah, okay. It's fine. All right, so is there any other question or comment? Anything anyone wants to get off their chest? This is a safe space.
Thank you all for being on this commission.
Thank you, yeah.
I, I would just like, uh, I thought, I thought, uh, David had a great idea a month ago when he talked about whatever happens here with the Board of Aldermen. Um, accepting these, modifying them, rejecting all of them, or whatever happens with the people's vote, which um, we should write a report of some sort. For some.
Or post.
And I just want to make sure before we can adjourn and maybe never meet again.
No, I have your number. I have your number. I will be loading you for your written report. You're not off the hook, okay?
So, and, and I believe that recommendation, Chris, was that sort of like, and a couple folks did it, David and, and Anna particularly, that we give sort of a note to future charter commission, sort of what we learned and, you know, advice, that sort of thing. Is that what we're talking about?
Could be part of it, yeah.
I mean, what, what I would, would like to do is to authorize if David is willing to do it, to ta, take the lead with our input on drafting a report, which might have to be after the Board of Aldermen's hearing, uh, for us to then review and, and then, I guess, uh, uh, finalize at one final meeting.
Well, let me, let me ask you a question because I'm not sure logistically, but are we still formally a commission until the twenty seventh of August? And so if we were to do this report, we'd need to do it in public. Um, public meetings. And so, you know, at least on Zoom, et cetera, and have it publicly posted. Um, that's my question. I, I don't know the answer to it, I'm just wanting.
I don't either, I, I, you know.
Um, Counselor Hamilton, what's your, what's your sense of that?
Can you repeat the question?
Um, if we were to, uh, work to put together the report that we were just talking about with recommendations, et cetera, um, would that be something, because we are still formally constituted until, I believe it's uh, sometime in August, would, would, would any work we do on it prior to the date that we are formally dispersed, would that still fall within the commission and we would need to do it publicly with public meetings, et cetera?
If you were gonna, you know, have a vote on whether to approve it, I don't know that drafting, you know, we don't.
Yeah, I don't think we would need to.
Draft in public, um, but if you had a vote to approve.
Of the commission, right. So if it were, if it were simply an informal, um, option that some commissioners could choose to participate in or not, um, then it would not be a formal process and we wouldn't, we wouldn't need to, um, uh, follow.
That's, that's not what I'm saying. What I'm saying is that drafting a document for circulation is not something you need to do in public, but if you're gonna vote to approve it, I would recommend that you do that in public. And that's gonna be the extent, and you can call me after if you would like additional public advice with public.
Yeah. No, that's fine. I, I thought there might be a case of that, that's why I wanted to raise it.
And I just, uh, and I hate to prolong this anymore. Um, but you have your additional six items. Do you just want to Chair Bobo perhaps entertain a motion to forward those for further study to the board for, um, clarity?
Yes.
Yes, I will now entertain, thank you, Counselor Hamilton, I appreciate that. Um, I will now entertain a motion to forward the, of the remaining six to the Board of Aldermen for further investigation, research, et cetera. So if anyone wants to make that.
I, I make a motion that we, uh, forward the remaining six, um, um, possible amendments uh, to the Board of Aldermen for further study and, uh, for, for this period.
Second.
And you could also call for the previous role, Secretary Intagliata, to move things along.
Yeah.
Previous role.
Aye.
Aye.
Nay.
Aye.
Okay, motion passes.
Okay.
I would move to authorize. No, go ahead.
That's not how the previous role.
Yeah, that's not how previous.
I was trying to help, but it's not helping.
All right. All right, a motion has been made and seconded. The, let me call the roll. Chair Bobo?
Aye.
Vice Chair Sheridan?
Aye, aye.
Great, uh, Commissioner Crossland?
Aye.
Commissioner Dwight?
Aye, just for re, for the research and investigation, it's not our official language.
Commissioner Grant?
Aye.
Commissioner Riley?
Nay.
Secretary Intagliata, aye. Uh, that is six ayes, Madam Chair.
Thank you. Were there, uh, it sounded like there was maybe another motion or a conversation to be had?
I, I make a motion to authorize Commissioner Dwight to initiate the drafting of a report that summarizes our uh, process and functions and outcome and to make recommendations subject to a final vote of approval by the board at a, uh, by the commission at a vote to be, a date determined later.
Do you want to have a vote?
For to approve the report, yeah.
Okay. All right, um, the, and um, do you think perhaps in the that it, it might be more practical to future charter commissions if there weren't a vote on it?
Hmm.
Yeah, I, like from the Ferguson Commission's process, they did a reflection document, um, afterwards. Actually, they had some grant funding from the Robert Johnson Foundation to support them doing a reflection process. But that wasn't an official proceeding of the commission to kind of like approve it in the same way that the commission report was, which was their version of policy recommendations. Uh, so, so personally, I, I don't I, I don't, I don't think it has to be some official product of the commission in that way. But, but do you think we should, you know,
Do it.
Put some reflections together, yeah, but, but not as like an official document of the commission. We should still release it, but.
Right, okay, so it sounds like the motion fails without a second. Okay. Any, any other?
I make, I make a motion that, um, that David Dwight, Commissioner Dwight be appointed to coordinate a, uh, the collection of reflections which include, um, any recommendations, observations, um, uh, et cetera, that, uh, that commissioners and others associated with the commission uh, and this work, um, would like to be able to retain and, and pass on in the future. Share in the future, let's say, share in the future. Does that work, David?
There's no second.
Yeah, so the motion.
If, well, that one fails too.
Okay, all right, is there other?
I, I'd like to.
We'll just, we'll just do it, we'll just make it happen.
Yeah, we make a motion.
Oh, okay. There was a second. Pardon me, excuse me. So now we have to vote on it, thank you, Vice Chair Sheridan?
What was, what was the motion?
To adjourn?
Was there discussion, Madam Chair?
Discussion?
Was that, I, wait, what was Vice Chair Sheridan seconding? The adjournment?
Yeah, was there discussion?
Oh, excellent.
Well, yeah. Was trying to say something and so it's unclear to me.
Making a motion to adjourn.
To adjourn, okay, there.
Okay. Great, thank you all.
Thank you.
Okay, bye.
All right.